Hey, Bill.
Technical difficulties?
I think so. Just give me a minute or two, okay? We'll get you on. Okay, sure, no problem. So the phone number is Bill.
Okay, that ending in 020?
Yep, that's Bill.
Okay, the fact that he's calling in on a phone, he can only stay attendee. I can't move him over to panelist. The app will, Zoom will not allow me to move him over to a panelist.
Okay.
It looks like he just disappeared.
He did. Not sure what happened there.
Yeah, I've tried to move just phone numbers over and they, I don't have a prompt to do it.
Okay.
It doesn't give you one sadly.
Well, Anthony, maybe what we could do is get started and he could use the raise hand feature and if you could let me know when you see that it's him, we can make sure he's included in the dialogue.
Yes, absolutely. I can definitely do that. I have my devices rolling and the floor is yours.
All right. Thanks, Anthony. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, October 19th. It is 6 o'clock. We do have a quorum. Commissioner Roshan is trying to connect via telephone, but we think we have him in the waiting room there. So we will go ahead and start. We have a quorum. We will start with a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Do we have any planning commissioner announcements? Seeing nothing. We'll move on to public comment period. This is a time for folks who wish to comment on things not on the agenda or something you would like to comment about now that comes later in the agenda, but you can't stay for. So Anthony, do we have anybody with a hand raised?
Yes.
Or public comment?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Stewart. I do see Avidé. I'm not going to pronounce that last name, but I'll just bring Avidé. You should be unmuted.
Hello. My last name is pronounced Higigi and thank you. So my name is Avidé Higigi and I wanted to comment on the smoke stacks. I am a licensed architect and a sustainability leader at ZGF Architects. I've been heavily involved in advocacy for sustainable planning and design at the local and at the state level with AIA California and various other groups. Commissioner Roshan reached out to me as a Woodbury graduate and because of my environmental expertise and asked me to share with you what would be some important considerations for the city to consider around demolishing the smoke stacks. So I believe a major consideration for the city should be the environmental impact of demolishing the stacks. These stacks, I understand, are originally constructed with concrete, brick, and steel. These are all highly carbon-intensive materials. And so the demolition of these structures will most certainly result in significant greenhouse gas emissions. So I do believe there would be merit in performing a lifecycle analysis to take a closer look at these GHG emissions associated with the demolition. Another consideration I'd like to put forward to the committee is the possibility to dismantle and reuse portions of the smoke stacks. I know of other cities who have done this successfully. It does take a little bit longer, but really the benefit would be that the identity of the smoke stacks could be preserved in some way and reused creatively. I understand the stacks are a historic and integral part of the identity of Morro Bay and I do think it would be a miss if the city did not consider preserving these in one way or another. So with that note, I would like to encourage the city to develop a master plan for this area. Imagine the possibilities for these smoke stacks within the larger context of the city. I know that there are plans I hear for a large offshore wind farm, the largest on the coast. This is going to be a huge symbolic transition for the city to clean and renewable energy. So I get excited when I think about, imagine if the smoke stacks could be repurposed into observation towers where you could have visitors and tourists come by, stand in the past, quote unquote, and they would be able to look down onto the offshore, the offshore wind farm. So they would be standing in the past with a view to the future and that could be a highly, highly unique tourist opportunity. So I'd like to just put these forward to the city for consideration and thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much for your comments. Anthony, do we have anyone else?
Yes, I see a couple more raised hands.
Okay.
Stuart, Ethan Kent, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Ethan Kent, you should be unmuted.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I also appreciate the opportunity to make a comment in this important discussion you all are having. The, I'm Ethan Kent. I work globally on place making issues. Place Making X is an international NGO that connects and supports communities globally on place making. I spent 20 years working at another not-for-profit called Project for Public Spaces, leading community processes, especially actually on waterfronts that were sort of undergoing transitions in these ways. And I'm just wanting to offer some comment on the extraordinary opportunity that I think you all have in the spaces in and around the smoke stacks and the waterfront, sort of along the waterfront there as well, to take this opportunity to really realize the potential of the city and how it meets the waterfront, to have this be a discussion about what the identity of the community is and how it can be showcased in this location and how the shift in this important land use can realize that opportunity. We find that there's often sort of a discussion of where waterfronts go wrong is when they move from sort of one single use to another one and we think that you really want to have the discussion be around different uses and programs that can layer to reflect and build the local identity, attract investment in other people on the terms of the local community and preserve that local identity and culture as well. So rather than having the conversation be around, do you get rid of something or not? It's often more useful to talk about the range of different uses that can go there and then have that help inform the design and infrastructure needs that will follow. But so the different tensions or debates around whatever should stay or go can be utilized to get some energy and attention for this, but also to help realize the potential of this public space and for the community to take ownership over it and really shape it to reflect their values and goals. We often think that people need to sort of raise the bar on what's possible with a great waterfront. There's not that many great waterfronts we find actually in the U.S. But creating a great waterfront destination here could really raise the bar for the country, but should learn from waterfronts in other parts of the world and Latin America and Asia and Europe. And but again, I want to emphasize that it's the process that's most important. It's not actually knowing the solution, but having a really robust process, getting people excited, getting interest locally and potentially regionally to help support that, your outcomes. And then the entities that, the capacity that emerges from the community through that process to really make a public space work, make good decisions, finance and program these spaces is key. And I'll say that a lot of the best waterfronts actually don't cost a lot. It's not about a lot of big design or infrastructure investment. We find that a lot of the best waterfronts are done through what we call lighter, quicker, cheaper approach, whether it's more about programming, arts, music, food, and sort of trying temporary uses, making some mistakes along the way and learning from them and then having those inform and drive demand for more, you know, capital-intensive projects if needed. So to close, you have an extraordinary opportunity to create what could be one of the most iconic cultural, social destinations on the California waterfront. And this is an opportunity I hope you don't pass up and glad to support from afar, connecting with people globally, dealing with similar issues, overcoming similar challenges as well and having to facilitate the conversation in any way that may be needed as well. So excited for you all and here to support you in any way you need. Cheers.
Thank you. Thanks so much for your thoughts. Anthony, anybody else in the queue?
Yes, thank you, Chair Stewart. I see Ann Johnston with her hand up.
Okay.
Okay, Ann, I have unmuted you.
I am officially unmuted. Thank you very much for allowing me to bring my voice to your city. I've been asked to speak at the request of Commissioner Roshan. And again, my name is Ann Johnston. I work for a company called Somas. We're an engineering firm within California, Arizona, and Utah. And I run a component of our environmental division. So, you know.
Anthony, I think we just lost her.
I think I'm back.
There you go.
All right. So Commissioner Roshan had asked me to kind of review some of the information on this project and provide a professional perspective. So after reviewing the last community meeting that was recorded, the PowerPoint presentation and the EIR and the general plan documents on the city's website, I definitely have some additional questions and some thoughts that maybe you as planning commissioners would want to think about as you move forward in the consideration of retaining or removing the stacks. In the Plan Morro Bay document, which is essentially the collective of the city's general plan, local coastal plan, and land use plan, it really contains policies that call for the preparation of the master plan for the Vista site. So the plan basically states that the vision and desired character of this area would be further defined during the master plan process, but it seems like we're already making a decision whether to remove the stacks without kind of entering into that master plan process. So just requesting that those processes are done concurrently and that there's no pre-decisional decisions made relative to removing the stacks without considering several issues. One of which is that are those stacks seen as an amenity, a tourist attraction, or historical resource as part of the master plan of development of the area? Or in the view of the city, is removing the stacks the best option for the master plan to return the site with unstructured views of the Pacific? It seems that that's a pretty important decision to make, but it should be made in the framework of the master plan moving forward. And with that, relative to the historical building potential, my question was, has the city's historical society been contacted? Have they weighed in on the issue? Has the state weighed in on the issue? I think those are important things, given that the property is over 50 years old and is, to some, or many, very iconic to Morro Bay. And how does that play out relative to the master plan and the incorporation of that feature into the layout of the area? And lastly, and it goes to one of your previous callers, is neither the Plan Morro Bay document or the supporting EIR really addressed the demolition of the stacks. So having that really evaluated in the master plan and supporting secret document, I think is really important to consider and evaluate before any pre-judgments are made relative to the disposition of the stacks. Whether they're demolished and recycled on-site to reduce truck trips offsite, which I know traffic in the air can be very problematic. So lots to think about before a decision is made whether to keep or remove the stacks. So thank you for your time and look forward to seeing how this project unfolds.
Thank you for your comments. Anthony, do we have anyone else waiting to make a public comment?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Perfect. And were we able to get Mr. Roshan back?
He is a top row of the attendees.
Okay.
I have him unmuted currently, so whenever he wants to speak, I believe it is, I believe it is star six or star nine. I have to double-check that really quick, but.
Hi, Susan, can you hear me?
I can hear you. All right, Commissioner Roshan, you are live.
I've heard everything so far, so I'm good. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Just want to make sure you were on board. Well, I will now close public comment period. If there is no one else in the queue and we will move on to presentations, we have none. So next up is the consent calendar. All we have on there is the current and advanced planning processing list. Any comments, discussions, or questions on that? We see nobody with a hand raised. So we, I believe, can just receive and file that. Is that correct, Mr. Graham?
That's correct.
All right, then let's move on. Public hearings. We have one, which I believe is going to be tabled, but Ms. Hubbard, if you would like to address that question, we can move on from there. Yes, so this item, which is 405 Elena Street, was, the public noticing was not complete. And so the recommendation is that we continue this to November 2nd, where the public notice will be complete. And I believe census was noticed in the Tribune that you will ask if there's any public that would like to make comment on that item, but there won't be a presentation and there won't be a decision other than to continue it to November 2nd. Perfect. Thank you so much. Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue for public comment on this item?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All right. Thank you. And I believe we can move on to new business. The first one is C1.
Excuse me, Chair Stewart, do you actually have to have a motion and a second to give the item due a date certain?
Gotcha. All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion, motion to continue to November 2nd.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All seconded. And Joe's about to, so there you go. All right. You want to poll the commission, Scott? So Commissioner Roshan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. New business. Site location 1140 Alessandro Street in Morro Bay. This is just a conceptual review of a design. And again, Ms. Hubbard is presenting on this. Yes, all right. We're going to share the screen. Okay. This is, as you mentioned, a conceptual review of a mixed-use proposed project at 1140 Alessandro. This is a fairly recent photo of the site from the kind of Y-intersection of Marengo and Alessandro. As you can see, Marengo, which is the kind of dividing line between the MCR zone and the R1, is on the right side of the screen and Alessandro is on the left side of the screen. The site, which I want to point out, the elevation change between Alessandro and Marengo is about 10 to 12 feet. And there is one existing shop building that's 1,200 square feet that is remaining and going to be part of the project. And this existing shop building is non-conforming as to the setback on Marengo and the setback to the neighboring property to the south. There's another structure shown on the left side of that building and that is a shed kind of construction storage unit and that will not remain on the site. The zoning is MCR S4. You can see the yellow outline of the site. It's adjacent to R1. On the other side of it is more MCR S4 and then it goes into C2 zoning. To the south, one parcel away, is the Morro Bay State Park. The mixed-use zoning allows residential to an R4 standard and the S4 is an overlay zone with design considerations. The land use area is designated as general light industrial. This is a site plan with Scheme A. So there's two schemes that we're looking at today. One is Scheme A, which is more dense. It has lesser setbacks on the streets, but has five residential condos with two live-work units. And live-work is not a term that's in our zoning code, but it's a pretty broadly currently used term that indicates that there's residential above a work area. So designed for someone to live there, walk downstairs in their pajamas and go to work. This is a chart that shows you the square footage of all of the units, the five units, the living area, the garage area, and the commercial shop area for the two units. A and E have live-work spaces. The total in Scheme A is 15,863 square feet. This is a residential floor plan. So this is above the garage units and this is about at street elevation on Marengo. So this is the ground floor of the dwelling units. This is the second floor of the dwelling units. You can see the shaded areas are living space and so it's kind of a variety of not completely filled second floor, but kind of a variety of setbacks and reduced second floor to give more articulation to the buildings. This is a perspective. The top one is from Marengo and the bottom one is from Alessandro. So you can see that residential is right along the street and commercial and automotive is along Alessandro. This is Scheme B. It's also five residential condo units with two hobby spaces. So this is not live-work. This is live-live, or live-live it up. This has the same basic circulation, parking, and placement of the condo units. They are just slightly smaller, which expands the setback along Alessandro. And this is the chart that shows the living area, the garage, and the hobby shop areas for each of these units. And this is just slightly smaller, so 14,833 square feet compared to the other one, which is about 1,000 square feet larger. It still provides pretty good number of bedrooms and bathrooms in all of the units. This is the same residential floor plan, just a little reduced in size, setback a little further from Alessandro. And this is the second floor. And again, it's just a little reduced space and a little reconfigured from the Scheme A. And this is the perspectives, which look very similar, but if you go back and forth, you can see that there are slight differences, that this is just a little smaller and it's set back a little more from Alessandro. So the development standards, the two columns on the right, Scheme A and Scheme B, show how these projects meet or don't meet. So the "don't meet" are in red, the development standards for the different criteria. And so the primary issue is along the exterior side yards. This is kind of a pie-shaped site with really long street frontages on actually three sides, but the primary ones are Alessandro and Marengo. And both schemes require continuation of the public right-of-way, which is one of the requests, and reduced setbacks on Marengo. The Scheme A also has a reduced setback along Alessandro. And both of them have the existing shop building, which has some non-conforming conditions as well. This is a drawing that's not as enhanced as the other perspectives that you saw in earlier slides, but it was produced just to give a little better idea of what this would look like on Marengo. So the concept and the S4 overlay review, which really has not occurred yet because we want to see which plan we're moving forward with, if any plan. But this will be enhanced architecturally to fit into the neighborhood and it'll have more articulation, more features on the side of the property. But the important thing is to show how it sits back at the edge of the sidewalk and it's at street level, so it's a two-story house, very similar to other two-story houses on the other side of the street. And allowing it to set back into the slope so close to the right-of-way abandonment allows the developments, the lower level of this development, to be the structural support for the steep bank. And it also provides, I think, a nice pedestrian frontage on Marengo. So this is kind of an illustration of the exceptions that are required and that the applicant is asking for. Reduced setback on Alessandro for Scheme A only. 10 feet is required and 5 feet is provided. Except the parking provided is adequate for the proposed use. And this really has to do with the fact that our zoning code does not include a live-work use. And so I looked at other jurisdictions around California and came up with a parking calculation that I've used on this project. And this project actually exceeds what would be required under some of the jurisdictions that have actual live-work defined in their zoning code and their parking criteria. And then on the bottom part of this, well, actually top and bottom, the blue shows the five-foot setbacks and what parts of the building, how much of the area is subject to the five-foot setback. The exception is I wanted to show the additional abandonment of right-of-way and so I highlighted that yellow. Part of that is also a five-foot setback. It does increase as you get closer to the corner, but I wanted to show that as yellow so you could see it's just a continuation of the portion that was abandoned in 1992. And then finally, that concludes the presentation. And so we're looking for guidance, recommendations, so the applicant can submit a formal planning application for planning commission review and decision and specifically talk about the additional vacation of Marengo right-of-way and the variances requested that allow the project to utilize the kind of topographically challenged site. And that concludes the presentation. Okay, thank you, Nancy. You're welcome. To start off with, ex parte, I will say that I did visit the site with Mr. Ingraffia and met with Mr. Lur.
and met with Mr. Lur, and had a tour, and got some history. Anybody else have any ex parte they need to, at this point?
I can confirm.
And not Mike? All right. Any questions for staff? Mike?
I have one question, Susan, for staff. I noted that we were looking at 10,890 square feet versus 11,018 square feet. If the row were granted, which would, the right-of-way, which would be about 228 feet? So we're looking at about a 228-foot difference if we grant the right-of-way. Is that true or false, staff?
I think it's 363.
Okay, well, that's why I asked. So, you know, I want to make sure we understand exactly how much right-of-way in feet terms we're getting up. So for some reason, I came up with 228, but you're saying it's 300?
363. So the previous--
That's total.
No, no, the previous vacation of right-of-way in 1992 was 457 feet.
Okay.
And it just didn't go the entire length of the street or the site. And so what the applicant is asking for, since there would be a 4-foot jog in the public right-of-way, is to continue the same 4-foot abandonment to the rest of that frontage.
Okay, so I've got the square footage right now, so it's 363 square foot of right-of-way that we would grant--
Yes.
--as part of this project. Okay, good, thank you. That's the only question I have.
Great. Joe?
Yeah, you know, Nancy, with respect to the commercial or hobby space, would there be anything that would preclude later on from one of those spaces being used as an accessory dwelling unit? Would that be allowed, you know?
So this is going to be a residential condo development. It's not a residential zone. I'd have to look it up, but I think ADU can be allowed in a residential zone, and this is not a residential zone.
Okay. And the second question is, with respect to the Marengo Street, the western large street, whether Scheme A or B is adopted, would that street be wide enough to accommodate parking on both sides of the street? Do you know? Because it looked pretty narrow to me.
It's actually not very narrow. I would have to check with Public Works.
The right-of-way is not narrow. The paved surface of the street is kind of narrow. So, meaning the paved surface of the street doesn't extend all the way to the property lines on either side, so there is a lot of unimproved right-of-way on both sides.
So that would probably mean, in all likelihood, you could park cars on either side of the street.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. That's--
Any other questions for staff? Mike has another question.
Yeah, Susan, I forgot to ask this question, only because I wanted Scott to chime in here. I noticed that in the notes ahead here, that the general plan that was just approved designates this as general light industrial, but under the old land use plan, it did designate this for mixed use, right, Scott? And how are we doing this? I just want to understand the logistics of how we're doing this.
The land use is proposed, the project is proposed in front of you, and I think the overlay in this area does have mixed-use overlay on it. But the zoning is not necessarily inconsistent with the new land use plan, and so the zoning does allow for this use to move forward, and so that's how it's not inconsistent, I guess, with it.
Okay. Okay. I just want to clarify again. Thank you.
Okay. Then we can now open this for public comment. Do we have the applicant in the queue, Anthony?
Yes.
Yeah, Jerry's there, Jerry Lur.
Great. Maybe we can let Mr. Lur speak first, if he has anything he'd like to add. His hand is up.
Yes. Gerald, I am unmuting you. You should be free to speak.
Hello, am I coming through?
You are live.
Okay, thanks. Yes, I've owned this property for close to 30 years now, and this was always the desired use for the final use of the property. And part of it was because you're, it's at the junction of two different uses, two different zones. You have the industrial and commercial on one side, and then you have the residential on the other side. And I've thought that this use and this project would solve some of the problems with the site that exists today, such as the residential being impacted by the commercial areas that are across and over this site. Also, there's an increased, you know, incidence of vandalism and vagrancy and public nuisance that are in this area now. And having this development and having occupation of the site would have eyes on the street and eyes on the neighborhood, which would help that situation a lot. The residential side, we're going to be taking, basically, the plan is to remove about 4-foot of elevation from the existing shop area, and then that would drop the residential area, the floor levels, below, pretty much below the level of the Marengo Street. So even at this, even the two stories there, would be a lot less impactful than just having a standard two-story house at-street level. So there's going to be reduced facades on that residential side, which will tie in, which will actually be nice, and will tie in with the residential floor that it's adjacent to. The other thing that I really, that drove this, the development or the design of this, was to have a live-work situation, you know, to develop a little craft community there. Originally, the original plan was to, that each of the units would have their own, you know, their own craft space for, you know, artists, you know, textile artists, or, you know, light-duty woodworking or something as that, maybe. As the different arts develop, this would, each residence would have their own place to be able to legally work out of, thus eliminating all the greenhouse gases, you know, emissions from car trips and, you know, congestion and stuff. It was never meant to be a retail area, and that could be included in the restrictions and CCNRs that will accompany this. But it always, you know, my thoughts were that this would fit, join the two neighborhoods, where you have all of the vehicular traffic coming from the commercial side, and all the parking would be handled on that side. And then you would have more of a, you know, the residential, a more human scale off of the Marengo side. The perspective that Nancy showed, and she did a great job, is problematic in the sense that we produced it, but because of the programs that are used and just the long focal length of the perspective, it elongates the building and the facade on that side, and makes, actually makes it look larger and longer than what it would be. You get a better appropriation of it, or if you look at the isometrics that are shown, and Nancy showed those also, but those will give you, those show you the building and the articulation more towards, in real scale. You know, I'm glad, you know, I'm glad to answer any questions. So if you have any questions, I'll also bring up the right-of-way abandonment. Originally, before I, when I bought the property, the condition of purchase was to get the right-of-way abandoned on Marengo, so that we could solve the encroachment of that site, which stemmed from bad survey markers or monuments that were set back in the '40s and '50s. So when the right-of-way was supposed to have been abandoned, it was supposed to continue all along the full side of that property. And it wasn't until I actually looked into this and started doing the TOPOs and surveys that I actually found out that the right-of-way from 1992, I believe, abandoned, vacation or abandonment stopped. And that was kind of a shock to me to find out. So with this, we're just, we're doing the continuation on that, which several property, which is typical to happen, you know, in Morro Bay, and several properties have had this done, you know, before. So this is not a special allowance for me. There's also the setback on Marengo Street, if you get the question in the setback, is really important for several reasons. One, the bank is unstable. We've had, I've had sloughing and subsidence throughout the time I've had that property. I've had to come back in and shore up and re, you know, basically regrade that bank to keep the street from falling in. So with that allowance, with that variance, I can then retain that side of the street and that slope, and actually stabilize the street, the existing street there. There's not, I don't have any plans to have parking on that side of the street, but there is room for parking, for the occasional parking, but all of the parking would be down off the Alessandro side. So I'm here, I think Nancy did a great job of explaining kind of a complex project, and I'm here to answer any questions, and if you have, you know, and to also listen to your thoughts and comments on it. So thank you for reviewing this project.
All right, Jerry, thank you for bringing it forward. Do we have any other public comment before we get to Commissioner questions?
Yes, I do see a couple of hands raised.
Okay.
Chair Stewart, Sean Green.
Okay.
Sean, you are unmuted.
All right, hi, Commissioner. I just want to chime in really quickly. Although I'm a tiny bit concerned about right-of-way abandonments, especially when this is now the second one and upwards of maybe 900 square feet, and of the reduced setback on one side, I do very much want to thank the applicant for doing what I'd consider the level of thoughtful engagement with a project and the neighborhood that makes for a project that makes sense for the place that it's located. So I just really want to praise the applicant for going into detail about the residential up-against-industrial zoning and what he has put into place to make this project doable on a very tricky lot. So to that end, thank you very much to the applicant and to Nancy for presenting both schemes in a, really a super reasonable way for, again, a nearly impossible lot to build on. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Green. Great comments, as always. Do we have anyone else in the queue?
Yes. I see Betty Winholtz with her hand raised. Betty?
This is Betty Winholtz. I'm going to disagree a little bit, that this is not an easy lot to build on. It's a pretty sizable lot, if you've ever walked around it. There is the disconnect between the two different heights, but I think starting from scratch, which is what is happening, is can be done, and that's why I like the idea that's proposed to go ahead and do the abandonment, so it can be reinforced to make it consistent on Marengo. But I would want, if, my suggestion would be, if you're going to abandon the city property, then the setback should be normal. They should not be reduced, that that would be the trade-off for that. I always have had an issue since the mixed-use projects went up on Main Street and Surf. They haven't been real successful as a live-work situation, and maybe that's just a term that's being used here to kind of get this into the zone, but I don't really see these condos with shops as technically live-work situation, particularly since only two of the three are. I would like to raise the concern that parking will be eliminated, actually on both sides of the, both streets, both Marengo and Alessandro. Currently, there is street parking on both sides, and I think that's a concern. And so I would hope that there would be something done about that, if it's possible. I would like to know, I'm all for saving that shop, and if that's the only thing on this property that is legal, non-conforming, then the rest of the buildings should be legal and have the regular setbacks. I'm all for saving whatever is normally on a site. I am concerned about the length of the building on Marengo. It's very long, and even though it's going to have some articulation, it's still a very long, solid wall. And I think that the pictures on page 37 to 39, the suggestions of what it's going to look like, I don't think they're really reflecting the height of what it's going to be, and even though they're set down a little bit, I'm wondering how high they'll still be. The staff report says they'll still be over 25 feet from that side of the street. But my big point that I really want to make is that as a transition area for me, and because it's R4 zoning, this really should be low-income housing. This should really be more, smaller units, if it's not going to be low-income, but isn't that what we need in this town? We don't need middle and high-end housing. We need low-income housing, and we could easily double the number of housing units on this property, if, or even triple it to 10 or 15 units rather than just the five. And to me, that would be a higher and greater use. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Great comments. Anybody else in the queue?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
All right. And where is Mike? Did we lose him? He had his hand up earlier, and I'm not seeing him on my screen.
I'm going to go ahead and bring him back over.
Great.
He tapped out for a moment here, but I've sent him back over to panelists. He should be back over there now.
Excellent. Mike, you are back on. Do you have a question for the--
Yeah, I don't know what happened, but I don't know, if you may have asked this question already, but I did visit the property for 30 minutes today and walked in, and I think that the applicant did do a great job in making the zoning requirements for two different zoning designations work. So I'd like to make that comment. I mean, I know he stated that he's lived there for 30 years. I mean, it may have taken me 30 years to come up with these schemes. So he had two schemes, Scheme A and Scheme B, but I didn't know if the applicant had one in particular that he preferred over the other. I was just trying to, that way we could really focus in on what we may want to add-- I was just trying to, that we could really focus in on what we may want to add to, to that project if he has one scheme over another. If he doesn't, that's fine, but I just thought I'd ask if he has a preference.
Sure, we can certainly ask him. I know when we talked about it on the site, he did suggest that the first scheme really is the live-work scheme with the more active spaces for whatever kind of industry there, you know, hobby-type industry there could be. But Mr. Lur, do you have a preference on these, the A or the B?
The, the A scheme is the preferred scheme. I think it fits the, the combination and the, and the transitional area of the site. So I, it also allows what, what you don't have here in Morro Bay is it really, a lot of areas where you could have an area where an artist or a crafts person could work and in kind of, in the, and then not have to deal with, you know, trying to find a commercial space where they could legally, legally work out of. So I know several artist friends that have a problem finding smaller spaces to work out of, and the costs are, are just exorbitant for them to use because they're usually in the retail areas. This would be restricted without retail, without retail sales from the sites. So it'd be, so therefore it'd be much more conducive to having a, you know, having basically an artist residency. So.
You know, one of the things Ms. Winholtz brought up is the, the challenges we have seen when other developers have tried to do mixed-use. She mentioned Main and Surf, and I think we've even seen it on Morro Bay Boulevard and Shasta. But, but I think what's different here is the way it's designed, it, it is more in a residential neighborhood on one side, and then with the way you've set up the garages and the parking, you do create that buffer. So I think people could feel comfortable that they are living in the neighborhood and certainly close to the state park, but have that option to have that, that art or craft studio set up with their business permit there as well. Any other comments?
Susan, if I may, another, another comment that I'd just like to, to ask for. Betty always gives great comments, is that in the offshore zone, it's, there's a minimum lot size of 1,850, I think it's 1,800, 1,850 square feet per unit. So that actually, you know, there should have been, you know, there's a, it's allowable for six units on site as far as, as far as residential. I'm only requesting five, basically because the parking consideration really drove the, the development of the site and the development of the design. And I would love to put a large-scale, low-income housing units there, but the problem is that this is not in the right. I've, I've looked at the financing potential for that, and the, there, this isn't a zone that they offer the financing for, for low-cost housing. And, you know, if, you know, if that was, if that did, if I did develop that on the site, then the, the impact to the neighborhood would be, you know, manyfold greater than what it is. Also, that, that the facade on Marengo is articulated with, with a large percent of it as single-story, with the roof slopes sloping away from the Marengo side. So you have, you have a large portion of that facade as single-story, and then the roofs with the, with the shed roofs sloping away from Marengo to increase the articulation on that side. And I think that breaks up that facade to, on an R4 building, to really, you know, short, short spans of two-story walls. And so, you know, hopefully I've answered, I've, I've responded to those comments. Oh, and then also, the, the variance for the, the setback reduction on Marengo, if, if that isn't granted, then this, this, you know, pretty much this whole scheme would not be able to be built. And so it may not even be feasible to do residential there at all then. That would be a whole different calculation because the reduction, the reduction on that side of square footage would just, you know, would just make it so that you couldn't put a viable living space in there as far as what I've, what I've tried to work out.
Okay, appreciate that. Joe, have you got some comments?
Well, actually, I had a couple of questions for Jerry.
Sure.
Jerry, you know, given that your proposal isn't going to have a view of the water and, and one side will look out on the wall, on the, it's a storage facility across the street, is it possible that this, that this housing will be of a lower price, albeit it's, it's not going to be low-cost housing, but are you anticipating that in some sense it might be more affordable, a market-based affordability?
On the, on the, on the market ability of it, you've, you've got some, you've got the views going, you know, to the hillsides. And so that's, that's an advantage and that's a, you know, that's a nice, nice look. That's why I put the decks out on that side. There's a certain threshold that you have to achieve or else you lose money. And with the cost of, with the cost of development these days and the cost of money and the cost of construction materials, it's, you know, without some kind of, you know, subsidized financing, it, it's going to have to be a, it's going to have to be market rate. And, but that would be, the market rate is what's, what's there. And, you know, we are in a transition zone. It's not an ocean view. And so that all has to be taken into account.
And there's still not single-family homes, so that's going to reduce the cost, I would imagine.
So another one of the questions. So I'm trying to figure this out. So if people, visitors come to the homeowners there, are you anticipating that they might park on the Marengo side and, and that's the front door? Or do you anticipate that they would go to the other street and sort of through where the garages are? Or do you even have an opinion on the matter?
Well, we have the guest parking on the Marengo side. So I'm kind of envisioning, there's, there's, there's doors to, on the Marengo side. And so I would like to see as much of the traffic come in from that side. And with the ring doorbells and stuff, you can open, you know, you can open lock doors and stuff remotely and have people come in through the, you know, through that side. There's also, you know, I would want to restrict parking, parking on the, on the, on the Marengo, on the Marengo side, I think I misspoken the, on the first time, is from the Alessandro side. The Marengo side actually has more parking than what, you know, what it looks because a lot of the residences on, on the other side of the street park their, park their vehicles perpendicular to the street. And so they're sticking way out into the, into the right-of-way. Those, those vehicles are, are parked entirely in the right-of-way and stuff. And with, with the side, the width of the street, you could park parallel on this side of, of, on the project side of Marengo and not impede traffic flow, I think. But, you know, that should, you know, that should also be discouraged and only, only used for short-term, you know, intermittent parking, you know, 15, 20 minutes, half an hour, something like that, deliveries, that kind of thing.
And the, and the last question, because this, this maybe gets to the crux of my, my concern. So for the, the, with respect to the, the setback on the Marengo side, putting aside the, the setback where the, the, your work, work building exists now, but, but the rest of the property, so I can understand, could you, can you characterize what you would have to do to that part of the property to actually achieve a larger setback? I, I don't quite have an idea of, of what that solution would require. I gather it's going to be more expensive, but I don't know exactly what you'd have to do.
Okay. If I understand you, Joseph, you're retired, you're talking if it was the, if the variance wasn't, wasn't approved, is that what you're asking about?
But, but leave aside the part of the, of the, of the setback that addresses where the, the existing workshop is, just the, the other, you know, four-fifths of the property along Marengo.
Well, for one thing, you wouldn't be able to retain that, that street side. So what you have, what you have is you've got, you've got a condition where you've got a steep slope that's coming into the base of the building with, especially in the rainy season, you have slough-offs and there's actually a spring that goes, that drains that whole hillside through that, that slope. So what you're going to have is you're going to have that grade, that slope sloughing off into the building. You're going to get collection of trash. You're going to get, if you walk the site, you know, you'll see that there, you know, that every, well, every time the wind blows and there's a trash day, you know, I'm up there picking up trash because it, it blows, it blows in and gets trapped on that slope. Without the setback variation, then there's no, no way to fill that up to grade level, to street level. And you're just going to, you're just going to have a nuisance that, that, that I don't know how to mitigate. There's going to be ponding there. There's also going to be the accumulation of trash, and it's really just going to be, you know, it's really just going to be a mess. So.
You just, you, you can't simply sort of, I, I get the fact that there might be some kind of a little ravine. It's not a matter of simply filling that in with more dirt, I take it.
No, there's no, there's no reason, there would be no reason for me to fill it in. You know, there's, there's no advantage to me and there's no advantage to the, you know, fill it in. And it also would reduce the usable area of that site so considerably that I don't know if it, I don't know, you know, really, I don't know if it'd be a viable project. You know, I would probably have to look at other uses for the site. It's owned contractor yard, so it would probably, it would probably go back to, you know, parking dump trucks on there or something, you know, from, I've got neighbors who, who would consider, would, would love to have that site to expand their, their, their areas. And so it just, it would probably be more viable just to either, either turn it into storage units or to, to keep it as a contractor yard.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. I appreciate it.
Mr. Roshan. So I have some comments. Is that the right time for it, Susan?
Absolutely.
I guess I want to start out by saying I'm actually really impressed with the ambitions of this project. I think it's, it's a very smart, fun project. The idea that it is a transition piece, the way Gerald explains it is compelling, and I'd have to say, studying the drawings, I think it's doing that. I think it's working. The idea of the type, the live-work, the way it's been done, very impressive to me. I think the architectural massing, starting there, is strong, simple, but it's, it's working. I, I have a couple of suggestions I'd like to make, but I guess I want to really start that the, overall, the project fits here. I think it's got a nice context, and I think it is ambitious, but in a, a very doable way. My suggestions, I think, I know it's conceptual, the architecture looks a little weak to me right now. The massing is good. It's the actual articulation, including materials, colors, and window design. It looks underconceived at this point. So I'd encourage the architect to, when they come back with the material board, be a little more inventive, especially around all the opportunities you have, I think, with the massing. The one thing I would suggest in terms of the massing is Betty's comment is a good one. The Marengo side is long. I think the way you vary the height really works to break down that, that long facade. But in Unit B, I think it's in Unit C, you, you push the, the one-story piece, the low piece, you pull back so there's an actual facade adjustment. But in Unit B, it only does it right at the door. I'd encourage you to look and study and see if there's any way on Unit B where the front door is to pull the massing back where the kitchen abuts to it. I know that means you're going to lose some space, but I think it would really, really help that long elevation to have variation ins and outs in that, in that one place. So I think what I would look for next time you bring it back to us, and I'm a fan of this project, but I would want to see a little bit more architecture. I'd want to see, of course, maybe more color palette, material palette. And then I think very important to this project will be a planting plan. The planting plan could really, really make this project work. I hope that's helpful. I'm a fan. And I think in terms of Scheme One, I'm with you on that, Gerald. I think it's, it's just fine. The only thing I would try to vary is that Unit B front door area to pull it back more across the whole width there of the low part. And then finally, I guess I'd say the east elevation needs a little work too. With all of that being said, I look forward to seeing it when it comes back.
Great, thanks for your comments, Mr. Roshan, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, and I'd just like to agree with Bill, and that's what I was trying to get to earlier with the applicant, was which scheme does he prefer? Because I wanted to work on that scheme architecturally. You know, I don't want him to have to go through this with two different schemes. Once we pick a scheme, Scheme One, then we can start the process of, you know, getting, getting it much more detailed, as Commissioner Roshan just stated. So I'd agree with Commissioner Roshan. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, and as for my comments, I really like this project. I love the creativity of it. I think they are large units. As somebody who's been able to live in a lot smaller places, and yet if you're looking at a live-work situation and hopefully more families coming in, I, I will go along with these larger units. I, I like the idea of this as a transition in this neighborhood, especially because I am aware that there have been lots of challenges there with that buffer between not only the sort of commercial activities, but some of the storage activities. It's been a challenge for those, those neighbors in those, those homes in that area. So I'm thinking this could solve a lot of problems and add some housing at the same time. The one question, and, and I know as a community, we kind of get caught up in the right-of-way issues, and maybe either Mr. Graham or Ms. Hubbard could address the importance of right-of-way. Now, I, I understand it has something to do, you know, with Now, I understand it has something to do, you know, with street widths, and yet I often see people in a neighborhood who will decide to just asphalt over their, the right of way outside of their home, and then they get kind of called on it, code enforcement comes by and says, gee, you didn't have a permit for that, and they say, yeah, but sand and gravel was washing down the street every time it rained, so I asphalted it. So maybe we could have just a little quick review on the importance of that. In my mind, it, it isn't sensible in this project to push that, to say, yeah, we need to maintain this right of way at all costs, I don't know why we would, when it, you know, again, that feels like almost putting cars is more important than people. So maybe we could have a little talk on that.
Certainly. I guess, you know, we have a lot of sort of streets in town that have wide right of ways. And we have lots of streets in town that you're all, as you're all aware, that do not have curbs, gutters, and sidewalks on them.
Right.
You get, you get the thing that you described, Commissioner Stewart, in that, you know, you get various paving solutions that people come up with, because what'll happen is somebody upslope does it, and then, you know, water drains down the street, and then starts taking out gravel and dirt in front of the house, you know, where they don't, where it's not paved, you just get these different types of paving solutions, you know, on down the road. That is a thing that happens, and if you drive up and down our streets, you'll see any number of those types of solutions out there. When you do that, you're supposed to come in and get an encroachment permit from the city and encroachment agreement to do those types of improvements, so that we can review them to make sure we're not calling, causing, as an example, downstream issues from drainage. I don't know that's necessarily the issue in this location, although they don't have the, you know, the curb gutter sidewalk, you know, issue going on here. It's not identified as an area to have those things on that side of the street, so not necessarily an issue. We had our Public Works Department, so, and city engineering staff review it, they agree that it's weird that we stopped the abandonment and only did a portion of it and didn't do it all the way around, that's goofy. And they didn't see any reason why we wouldn't otherwise abandon the rest of it, there's no use for it from the city standpoint, the city envisions, so that's fine. And you have, the commission has seen a couple of these in the, in the last few years, you know, Pizza Port was, I think, one of the last ones that we did one on, and that made sense in that right, and this makes sense, I think, in this location as well. So it's not always the correct solution. And, you know, our, our major archerials and things like that, you want curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, you want the right of way built out, you know, and if there's additional right of way beyond that, you know, that, you know, people want to make use of, then so be it, but you want to get it in those places that provide the connections throughout our city, so people can get from place to place, you know, on sidewalks and those types of things. So that's, that's sort of how it is, again, it's a mixed bag out there with a lot of streets that don't have curbs, gutters, sidewalks, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Engraffia.
My opinion is much the same as been expressed, although I am thinking that given the significant number of bedrooms in the project, that people are going to use Marengo as a, as a place to park, particularly if it, if it looks more residential and looks more like a front door, so I'd like to see there's some, some assurance that there's going to be increased parking on Marengo. And like earlier expressed, and I'm sure will, will happen, that when, when the application comes before us again, that there are more details as to colors and veneers and that sort of stuff. I just, in my layman's sense, I, I think the Marengo side needs more articulation and breaking up of the, of the facades, it looks a little too uniform to my taste, but I don't, I don't imagine that would be very difficult. Landscape plan, of course, but that's all expected. And, oh, yeah, I don't know, maybe, maybe I would, I would like to see some sort of low fencing or something or other on the, on the east side, something that would somehow break up or partially conceal what seems to be, at least on the plans, a large expanse of asphalt. That's, that's what I'm thinking, but again, you know, not a, not a major concern. And I think it's just imaginative, and I, I think everybody, including the neighbors across the street on Marengo, are going to be delighted that the neighborhood is improving substantially.
Great, thanks for your comments. All right, Mr. Luer, do you feel you have enough feedback from us?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate your comments, I've taken them to heart, and I've thought most of the same. The, developing more articulation, you know, more detailing and stuff on the side was always, on the plan was always, you know, in the cards. This was basically a massing scheme, and it's a basic, a basic concept, and I wanted to bring it forward to you before we developed it too far, so that if there were, you know, so that you could have your input on it, and we could, we could, you know, I could gain from your wisdoms, and we could, we could move forward with it. So I appreciate your, the effort you put into it, and I want to thank Nancy and the staff for, for helping with a convoluted and kind of unique site. So once again, thanks, and I'll be bringing this forward with more, more clarification on, on detailing and materials, and, and we'll take another look at the massing of the Marengo side, but it is a long, skinny piece of property, so there's, there's, there's certain, only certain things you can do, but, but I appreciate all the thought and that, and I agree with, I agree with all the comments, so.
Great, thank you for bringing it forward, great job.
So, so one, just one clarification, it sounds like everyone was okay with him proceeding with Scheme A.
Yes.
And everyone is understanding that Scheme A is dependent on granting the lesser setbacks on the two frontage streets. I am quite comfortable with that, it looks like I'm seeing nods, and.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, and then the other thing that you will be asked to do is make a recommendation when this comes forward again for your decision, you'll make a recommendation to City Council about the right of way abandonment.
Okay.
Yes, I'll make our ordinance.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, does anybody need a break, or are we still good to go?
Good.
Keep going.
Good.
All right, next item is C2, the review and consideration of policy memo to establish design guidelines for public amenities along the waterfront. This is Mr. Graham, and thank you so much for pulling together pretty impressive packet of stuff from all of our various documents and sent short notice. So take it away, Scott.
All right, thank you, Chair Stewart, so I am going to share my screen. Okay, I think you should be able to see the presentation now, correct?
Yes.
So, with a background, Planning Commission broached this subject back on September 21st in relation to a removal project that was in front of the commission down on the waterfront, and the request was that we bring this back as a future agenda item for consideration of the creation of a potential policy memo to address some design elements, both along the Harbor Walk and the Embarcadero. The staff report that you have, that I gave you, has a lot of background material in it, and it was just to provide some context, that we do have both the recently adopted general plan, as well as the, the design element in it, and the downtown waterfront strategic plan, where there are, you know, several guiding policy, you know, policies that talk about design on the waterfront and creating these types of, you know, design guidelines for these areas, really. So wanted to, I kind of put a lot of it in there, I know it was a lot of reading and for you, and stuff that you had in the documents, but I wanted to provide the context so you could, you know, feel comfortable moving forward and having the conversation about coming up with a, a policy memo in the interim, before we kind of move forward, maybe in the future, in future goal setting processes with the council and so forth, to identify, like, update of the waterfront master plan, which is where this, these types of, you know, long-term policy guidance would live. So anyway, that's sort of the, the intro to that. Kind of looked at it in, in the context of what are we trying to do, and came up with a couple of objectives that we'd like the council, the Planning Commission to review, the information's in front of you in that context. The first one being identification of policies and practices to avoid privatization of public space. And then underneath that, you see five bullet points, that the first is to create a clear and easily recognizable identity for our public spaces. You know, one of the example, umbrellas with, with graphic identity for the, like, say, Harbor Walk on them, or we have a, a public umbrella color that we, that we use for all of our public spaces down along the waterfront, so we'll ask you to weigh in on that. You know, do we have a specific type of table and chair, or does it change? Maybe it's specific types of tables and chairs in the kind of center, in kind of the visitor serving area of the Embarcadero, that maybe it changes as you get towards B Street and go, and going north, because the uses down there are a little bit different. Do we, you know, the idea that we want to avoid clutter, you know, and cluttering the public spaces and plaza areas that we have down there, so, you know, minimizing maybe the number of standalone planters that we have, or barricades, that sort of cordon off these public spaces, meaning we want them to feel available and open spatially for the public, and we want it to feel inviting, like they're supposed to be there, and not like they're a private space associated with a specific business. Want to maintain the view corridors to the bay and the Harbor Walk through these areas, so you don't want to put a bunch of plantings inside the view corridors and the vertical and horizontal walkways, lateral access, Harbor Walk, that would impede those views, because that's why you're there, is to, is to take advantage of those views. Second objective would be to promote a continuous and cohesive experience for the Harbor Walk, one of the best assets the city has, and we've just now started, you know, I mean, through the, the general plan update process, sort of branding it as such, as the Harbor Walk. It, you know, in all of our documents, it's also, it's referred to as public lateral access, which is far less, I think, attractive, and I much prefer the Harbor Walk, and in fact, we have some wayfinding signage that we're working on now, that, that call it just that, which is nice. And underneath that, you have, again, a couple of bullet points underneath there, and that would be to look at potential standards for these improvements, meaning for guardrails, or the color spectrum for the lighting that you have on the waterfront, the types of lighting fixtures, that type of thing, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of input that's, that's provided along those lines in both the general plan and downtown waterfront strategic plan. While look at, you know, continuity of decking materials where we can have it. We do have issues along the waterfront with eelgrass, and so sometimes you have to have grating, sometimes you can have wood plankings, you know, so there, we have a number of different materials if you walk along there, and it's, it's not consistent, but we're trying now, moving forward, to, to provide consistent materials for those things, and for railings and that type of thing. Looking for, you know, as it relates to identity signage along this area, maybe actively identifying this as the Harbor Walk and directing people towards it is nice. Want to incorporate adjacent events and spaces to help, you know, tell the narrative of the area down there. We have these, you know, sort of plaza areas, and, and sort of programming them, maybe in the future might be something we want to consider, and you want to make them so when they're designed, they look like they're public again, I hit on that note previously. And then, you know, you want to consciously include the fishing village, you know, narrative for how you're designing these spaces, and that's in the downtown waterfront strategic plan, and it's in your general plan design element as well. So again, the background documents is your 2021 general plan, your 2018 downtown and waterfront strategic plan, and the 1996 waterfront master plan. I will say from the design standpoint, the waterfront master plan has lost a little bit of its luster, and, you know, the more recent documents do a much better job of telling the story about what we're supposed to do down there, and so I've sort of focused on that and not so much the waterfront master plan, because those two documents have picked the things up that are in the waterfront master plan, then gone beyond those. Example of general plan policy, I didn't put the ball in here, you'll be thankful for that, otherwise we'd have like a 52-slide deck here in front of you. Policy LU 8.15, design flexibility, and it talks about allowing for design flexibility in the downtown and waterfront areas, while perpetuating quality development that will complement and enhance the area's eclectic style and small seaside character. Development along the waterfront shall comply with the waterfront master plan, it's one of the design, one of the policies in the design element. Downtown waterfront strategic plan, or DWSP for short, has these sort of base guidelines in the front end of it, talks about, again, preserving that eclectic charm, the small town seaside character of Morro Bay. The design of that document is to connect the downtown and the waterfront and to improve amenities in both of those areas. Again, encourage high-quality materials and architectural elements to enhance the way those two areas look. And have a, it talks about creating a coordinated and consistent design theme, I think that's why we're here today, right? We're here to kind of come up with what that looks like, and that's coming up with a palette of things that the, that the Harbor Walk looks like, that, you know, the planters look like, that the street furniture looks like, the lighting looks like in these areas. I mean, if we can identify those, and they can be fairly simple, you know, almost bullet pointed type things, maybe with some associated pictures that we can put into a memo, that would be fantastic, and, and staff would use that when engaging with folks that are looking to do development along the waterfront. And then it has policies, again, that, you know, facilitate continuous lateral access, which is the Harbor Walk, and then desire to preserve views along these areas, and then to, you know, foster a stronger sense of space and place and community, and to have these areas have a high function for those, those uses. There are implementation items in the DWSP, kind of the four main ones, is to develop a comprehensive plan for the Harbor Walk, to ensure a continuous pathway along the water's edge, that is uniform in design, so that's part of what we'll be talking about today, right, is coming up with what that uniform, that uniformity looks like, what those materials should be in different scenarios, I think. And then develop a street scape furnishing palette, that can be along the Embarcadero, that could be furnishing for the plazas, that could be for the Harbor Walk area and those areas that are adjacent to the Harbor Walk. Talks about installing new and improved street scape furnishings, and then again, goes again into the lighting and the, and the tree grates and the benches and the trash bins and all those types of things that you find down along the waterfront, coming up with that palette that works in that area. Then there's some discussion in there about, you know, developing a historic heritage, you know, walk along the Harbor Walk, we have all of those interpretive signs down there, which I think are fantastic, and sort of lending into what those look like, and maybe coming up with some standardized guidelines for, for what those look like. This, this jumps into the design elements, we, we touch on benches, trash and recycling containers, railings, bicycle racks, furnishings, umbrellas, paving and decking, then planting, lighting, and interpretive signage, like I mentioned. So I give you the policy language that kind of leads into these things, and then you get specific slides that kind of look at all of these types of things. And it's really just to kind of spur the discussion among the commission. The intent here is to have the conversation about things you'd like to see, things you don't want to see, and then for me to sort of bring that back in a, in a policy memo format with a resolution, so that you have, so that you can review that in its entirety, and then we can move from there to maybe finalizing what that document might look like. First for benches, you know, I have at the top here, consider following criteria for the selection of benches, you know, I think we want things that are simple, timeless, comfortable, and really durable, they need to be durable and, and sort of damage resistance, so as bulletproof as we could make them, I think. If there's things you want to add to these lists, we can add things to it for things you think don't apply or aren't criteria we should apply to these features, then I would like the commission to let me know. Trash and recycling containers, you know, what do you want these to look like? We have the, we have a mix of these along the waterfront, and there are probably a dozen different types of, you know, trash receptacles along the waterfront, and that's because there's public trash receptacles, and then there's trash receptacles that are put on the lease sites, and, and we don't direct what those are supposed to look like either, so that might be worth a conversation with the commission this evening as well. Certainly, again, we want those materials that we're using to be durable, and from trash receptacle standpoint, we, we don't, we want them to keep the trash inside and don't allow trash to come out of them very easily, because we have seagulls and a lot of wind, so the, the more we can pay attention to those types of things, the better. You know, railings, bull rail edges, you know, considerations and criteria for these types of things. You want to have a good top rail on them, something to lean on, you want to create a nice, you know, rhythm along these areas, you want to make, create consistency among materials as much as we can, you might like to have things that, you know, are less easy to climb on perhaps, and you want to have railing materials that, you know, kind of maximize that transparency, so you can see through them, and on the waterfront, you want to be able to see through them, and that includes if somebody's sitting in a chair looking out across the Harbor Walk, out to the water, you want to be able to see through them, so you don't want. be able to see through them, so you don't want opaque materials in that area, I wouldn't think. Again, you definitely want them to be durable and maintainable, and then appropriate for the scale of the waterfront. Here's a couple of pictures of the bull rail edge that you see on wharves oftentimes, T-piers, things like that, and then different railing designs, one with the wire that we used most recently on the Dutchman's project, and the project to the south of that, which was Rose's Landing. But there are other opportunities there, for sure. And you see a couple of different ones, metal posts and wood top rails, or all metal fencing the one in the down right-hand side of the slide. These aren't the end-all-be-all, they're just examples to generate discussion. Bike racks, we have a whole bunch of different types of bike racks around town. You have all different, you have ones that look like art pieces, you have other ones that look very functional, like the one in the bottom left. That one I actually took from a public comments, came in, those are the ones the city uses, you see that they're painted blue, but you see them around town in the downtown area. And then we have some more decorative ones that are down on the waterfront, so having a discussion on that would be good. Again, durable, low maintenance, vandalism resistant, those are all the things you kind of want to keep in mind when you're looking at choosing these types of things, and these would be things that you put into the policy memo, I think. Umbrellas, question is, I mean, what kind of umbrellas, if we want to, you know, have a policy for them, what do we want to do with those? Do we want our large umbrellas okay, or do you really want ones that are small, maybe only six feet in diameter? You have a lot less of a chance of those things flying off and leaving the site damaging things if they're smaller, but maybe you have larger ones with fewer, you know, larger ones but fewer of them. Maybe we come up with policies related to, you have to have a, you know, a solid base that they're attached to or fixed to. You know, those types of things would be part of the conversation I would like to hear from the planning commission. And then, what do you want these public space umbrellas, if we're going to have them and have a requirement or policy for them, what do you want them to look like? Should they be a color, or should they be, maybe they should say Harbor Walk on them or something, if you're on the Harbor Walk side of the buildings on the Embarcadero? Any and all of those things are, I think, certainly available to include in the policy, and they're all things, the more consistent we are with them, the more they make them look like public spaces, so I think important to consider. Some more pictures of, you see both umbrellas and table types here. You have tables that aren't fixed to the ground, they don't have chairs that are fixed, you have tables that are picnic benches, we have some of those, think all the tables that Giovanni put out there recently at his place, those are kind of picnic table-looking things, pretty heavy wood, probably less appropriate for the middle of the Embarcadero. You're probably looking at something that are smaller, more along the lines of, well, with the yellow umbrellas there, or even the ones with the blue smaller umbrellas at the bottom. And then you see some of the existing tables that we have along there, as another example, with wood tops, metal chairs on the bottom there. Paving and decking, we have fiberglass decking out there, we have wood decking, we have different types of metal grating out there. We have to use the metal grating and fiberglass grating in areas where we're over the water oftentimes, especially when we're in areas that are, where eelgrass exists, we don't have a choice with that. But, you know, picking something, and so we have a specific material that we're using every time, is a good idea. And then do we want to consider different paving materials in the plaza sides of things? And do we want to make something consistent there? We have different types, you see the sort of Dutchman's area, middle of the screen, and then to the right, one of the other areas down there on the waterfront. You know, it's got a different paving material, and so, you know, that's what you end up with if you don't have a design guideline to direct people in one direction or another. For plantings, both along the Harbor Walk and the wharf areas, we probably should have plantings that are minimal on the edges of those facilities. You probably want to use them in areas that accent entrances to buildings. If you're placing plants on the pier decks and stuff, those would be in pots or small You probably don't want them to be the primary focal points on these areas, so again, limiting their footprint and having them be somewhat smaller, so they don't detract from the views of the bay, the waterfronts. And they should definitely be located outside of the required pedestrian accessways and those widths, the 10-foot width minimums. You have them on the edges outside of those is fine, but you don't want them, you know, impinging upon the walking surface there, because I think 10-foot is about the minimum you want to have, and that's the minimum that's allowed, so we don't want to encroach into those areas, and our policy suggests that we don't do that. There's just some examples of, you know, sort of movable planters, you have wood ones with metal edging, you have ones that are entirely metals, concrete ones there. You have one at the bottom, it's Corten Steel, those are kind of cool looking, because they, with the rust, they do, I don't know. These are just examples, they're definitely nothing you have to choose from, just an idea to generate discussion. And then lighting, you know, want to be careful about the lighting that we have along the waterfront. We have lots of, you know, sort of policy language in the GPLCP and downtown waterfront strategic plan, to talk about lighting along the waterfront, you know, to talk about it being low-level lighting, fewer standalone, like light posts versus the preference to have, you know, wall sconces, those types of things, shielded from above, dark sky compliant, you know, in that sort of Kelvin range, that's the warm tones, you want those, the bright blue and whites we don't want. You know, those are the types of things we'd be looking for input on from the commission about what you think about those concepts. And then, just some lighting examples, you sort of see kind of the one in the middle on the top there, it's kind of a brighter white, I don't think we really want something along those lines, but the softer, you know, yellower lights that you see for the sort of pier waterfront areas seem to make a lot of sense, and kind of have that warm inviting feel versus, say, those brighter or more intense light fixtures, Kelvin ranges. And then, do we want to, do you want to weigh in on the interpretive sign things down on the waterfront? We have lots of them already, maybe the horse has already left the barn, or maybe it's worthwhile talking about what the materials might look like for those, you know, have a uniform stanchion that they're attached to, those types of things, or maybe options for placement of those, that you'd like to see them versus places you don't want to see them, and maybe that's something that you can get some input from the commission, and I can bring back some more information on that in the future. Those are just examples of some of the signs on the waterfront, and then, you know, some signs that I don't tend to necessarily Morro Bay, so. So I think that kind of ends my presentation. You know, sort of the next steps is for the planning commission to provide input on the staff report and what you've seen, and then note that I will take that input, the idea would be for me to put some semblance of the actual policy memo together, bring it back to you, maybe with a resolution, maybe just for your review to get input on it, depending on where the discussion this evening goes. With that, I will turn it over to the commission for questions, comments, and that type of thing, and I will stop sharing my screen. I think. Okay. There we go.
There we go. All right, back to the commission. Any questions for staff? And then we should open for public comment. Any particular questions? We understand what we're doing. Any public comment, Anthony, on this topic?
Yes, thank you, Chair Stewart. I see Sean Green with his hand up.
Excellent.
Sean, you are unmuted.
Thank you, staff and planning commission. Obviously, this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart, so I very much thank Scott for bringing it to the commission. I just have a couple of brief comments to maybe get you started on your discussion. I do think, I do think that this discussion is far bigger than a policy, kind of a casual policy memo, especially given that one of Morro Bay's historical weaknesses has been our communication between boards and departments, which can sometimes lead to some mixed messaging. So because there's a significant kind of branding component to this decision, I do think that whatever we develop should get into the hands of tourism and from, and chamber, possibly harbor advisory board, and possibly an opportunity for residents to comment in a little bit more public environment. Now, I don't mean to put too many cooks in the kitchen, but I just think that if we're trying to have, put together some sort of cohesive messaging, that the appropriate bodies should kind of voice their position at some point on whatever palette we, whatever palette you tentatively come up with. Next up, the only specific thing I want to mention is dealing with specifically bench arrangements, and, you know, to some degree, other furnishings. Our waterfront placement of items feels really, really arbitrary, whether we're placing something perpendicular or parallel, which could seem like such an inconsequential decision, when in reality, that puts sitting people's legs in the line of pedestrian pathways, and so, so an articulation or a navigation or an arrangement pattern or set of rules, I think, is relevant to include. And then lastly, because I think this is a, you know, a pretty important set of decisions that perhaps we can time this, the release of this policy memo to some future date in 2020, early 2022, that is timed in conjunction with a waterfront lease site audit from north to south along the Embarcadero. Why I mention that is I've attempted on multiple occasions to pull CUPs, active CUPs of waterfront lease sites, to determine if certain small buildings that were added to the lease site after are in compliance with what we have on their CUP, and so I do think that this is also an opportunity to take inventory of what items we do have on the ground right now that are public, even if it's a system of self-reporting by the waterfront lease sites, so that we can then take this a step further and have it be more of a comprehensive plan of attack when we do go forward with implementation. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Sean, great comments. Anthony, anybody else in the queue?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I just wanted to bring forward Peggy Mandeville's email to the commission in case people didn't have the chance to read it. She just suggested, "Street furniture should be durable and low-maintenance, easy to replace or repair, vandal-resistant, not too bulky to minimize space needs, and capable of including a donation plaque," which is a nice idea. She also added a second email suggesting that paving and decking should not create a bumpy ride for wheelchairs and strollers, which I thought was a good comment, thinking of some of the grading we have, and I think some of it works great, and I could see, no pun intended, and some of it I could see catching the little tires of, you know, wheelchairs and strollers, just to be cautious of that. And then, of course, as Scott mentioned, she did like the peak racks for bicycle parking, so just wanted to make sure her comments were put on the air. All right, and I see Mr. Roshan with his hand up. And you are still muted.
There we go. Thank you, Chair Stewart. I'd like to make a suggestion, and I want to thank Scott for that really strong presentation. Rather than go item by item on all those things, which I think would be an overwhelming effort in one meeting, I'd like to suggest that the commissioners use this and maybe get back in writing to Scott to emphasize different pieces of their memo, of the items he's asked us to look at, and maybe tonight's discussion could be a little more big picture. I'd like to start with a quick comment. I sent all the commissioners a, it's called Capitalizing on the Appeal of Waterfronts, 11 of the Best. This was an article by Fred Kent of Project for Public Spaces, and it was his son, Nathan Kent, who spoke at Public Comment at the beginning. And if I could, I'm going to read just a couple of pieces from this, because I think it has a big impact on the way we think and brand the waterfront. So upfront in this, his first sentence, "Of all the types of public spaces that exist, waterfronts are among the most strongly linked to the identity and history of a city." I think that's an important thing to think about. There could be no Stockholm without the harbor, no San Francisco without the bay, no Rio without the beaches, and no Morro Bay without our, Moro at our bay. What that's saying is that he's talking about the identity and branding. Then he goes on, in conclusion, in the same article, his takeaway, "As you review this Best of Waterfronts list, we want to stress the fact that designer-driven waterfront cities like," and he mentions Barcelona, Copenhagen, and New York, "are significantly held back when compared to the program and activity-driven historic waterfronts we've mentioned." I'm emphasizing this because this fits us to a T. We are about the historic waterfront. What I'm emphasizing is the activity-driven programs that we could be looking at. At the last meeting, we worked with Paul from the Dutchman, and one of the exciting things we were adding to the waterfront was a plaza-scale part of the walkway. This might be one of the very few places along the Harbor Walk where you could begin to hold a wedding, for example. It becomes an activity-driven space. Also in that project at the Dutchman, we looked at the historic nature of the walk itself, how to maybe save a piece of the, you know, the historic wharf, really tell the fishing village story. I think what I'd like to see added, maybe in a big way, Scott, is to look at the activity-driven part of what Fred Kent is talking about. How do we begin to encourage activity-driven efforts along the Harbor Walk and the history portion? How do we then begin to fold that in on identity? And what he's strongly saying is that's where the best Harbor Walks come from, that's where the most successful tourism comes from. So that's my only comment on this, and I think if we thoughtfully think, and if we all commit to offering you a written response by, I don't know, early next week, maybe that might be a more effective use of our time. Thank you, Chair Stewart.
Thank you, Commissioner Roshan. I saw Mike with his hand up first, and then Joe.
Yeah, and I'll just chime in here, and I felt when I reviewed all of the stuff Scott gave me, all of the stuff Bill gave me, and all of the other stuff I got, that I was cramming for a graduate school final exam. I'm not ready to take my test, so what I'm saying is I agree with Bill, but I would like to, remember the last time we said, "Let's not rush through this." And in fact, one of the first questions our Susan asked earlier is, "We may have a new planning commissioner with some good experience coming onboard soon, so it would be great to get the other planning commissioner, if possible, involved." I just don't think it's where, you know, we've been here for 50, 60 years already, I don't think we have to get this done in 14 days, is what I'm saying. We should be thoughtful. I've got a lot of reference material, I've got to go through the newly revised general plan, the strategic plan, the waterfront master plan, and all of this reference material. So this is a lot of historic, long-term and short-term documentation I've got to go through, and I'm not ready to really put anything forward as far as what I'd like to see until I've had a chance to fully review everything. I think we had a couple items on the agenda tonight that were very important as far as getting things done now, but I think these are the kind of things, we put the brakes on just a little and take our time as a planning commission, because we're going to be sending this to council, so I'd like to give a little bit more time, maybe not two weeks, but maybe at the first meeting of November. Well, that would be two weeks. Well, how about the second meeting of November? You know what I mean? We've just been going so fast with a lot of stuff, you know, our planning commission has been very productive, I'd say, as far as giving feedback, so I'd like to take a little bit more time, maybe a month. So, you know, I double Bill's recommendation and say, "Give us a month to provide full feedback, give us some time to review everything we've gotten," and then forward our recommendations.
A friendly encouragement. If the commission is willing to make comments this next week, let's get the ball rolling. It's going to easily take a month to go through those and make sense out of them, but I'm kind of encouraging us to do this so that we're ready for the next project that comes through. It doesn't have to be perfect, but I think action, at least starting the ball rolling, would be a really good thing.
And I think, and I just want to comment back to Bill, I think we actually started that ball rolling with the Dutchman's project. I mean, I really think we took our time and got it right. We put forward a better project than We put forward a better project than we would have put forward by thinking about what we were doing with one project. Here, we're talking about the whole waterfront. So, let's, you know what I mean? We took two weeks on that one. So, if we could just take 30, 30 days on the whole waterfront, that's just my comeback to Mr. Roshan. So, but I will try. Bill, I mean, I'll throw everything else to the side and try to eat all that's on this plate.
We, we expect you to take a sabbatical and do your postdoc work at, you know, the next four weeks. Joe? And you are muted still. You're still muted. There you go.
Congratulations, Scott. You just are a really comprehensive and thoughtful collection of ideas and policies. It's, it's, it's very useful. And also, Scott, what a novel concept, actually taking your time to think about things and then write them down, and then review them, and then amend them, and then send the ideas in. So, I'm all for that. Just a couple, and a couple more general thoughts. I, I just have a, to keep things simple, I just have a feeling that anytime we contemplate doing something on the Embarcadero, it should, we should just ask ourselves the question, if we do this, are more people going to come? Are more varied people going to come? And are they going to stay longer? Everything should contribute to making it a pedestrian destination. And as to an overview, you know, when I, I look at the list, you know, I say to myself, I very much support consistency, but I don't support conformity. Okay? So, there should be some variety. I really like things that are simple and classic, and I, you know, furniture and the like, and I just don't want things that are intricate or what the current fashion taste is. And, and then keep in mind that with respect to any kind of marine artifact, it's got to be authentic and, and, and in no way a souvenir or that sort of kitschy sort of stuff. So, those are the kinds of overall testing questions I use to decide whether I support something or not.
Great. Well, I really agree with Joe's comments and his sort of overview suggestions. I love that consistency versus conformity. I, I don't like the idea of getting kitschy and cutesy, and the simplicity and the functionality is important. I loved Mr. Green's comment about opening it up to some of our other advisory boards, I know, and the various committees I've been on over the many, many years. This has come up many times, and there is a lot of overlap with, with tourism, and certainly with Public Works, with the Harbor Advisory Board, and Chamber, I'm sure, would have many important feedbacks. The one thing I want to sort of remind us all to think about, too, as we, we look at our waterfront and we talk about, you know, the history and its authenticity, we have a living fishing waterfront right now. We have a commercial fishing industry that has that whole Measure D area of the waterfront. And I think part of what we need to do as we consider things is to continue to support that and possibly to expand how we support in the way we design things, so that when we have our pedestrians walking through these harbor front areas, they are doing so safely and in a way that doesn't interfere with, with fishing activities, perhaps, though in a way that they can watch things more easily going on. Because I think people do find it very interesting. It's not, it's kind of like children from the inner city visiting a farm. It's not something they have experience with. It's great, great for learning, but these are also working people who need to get their jobs done. So, you know, as we, as we think about how we want to sort of plan for our plans, I, I think we should always be keeping that in mind, that we have current live, active commercial fishermen to consider in these plans. I could see the idea, if Mr. Graham is open to it, of us providing sort of written comment. I, I certainly have my own notes on things, so it wouldn't be too hard for me to just give feedback on some of these sort of basic things. Scott, do you have a response to what you're hearing?
So, I, I provided you a lot, okay? And I know I provided you a lot, because I didn't know where the commission wanted to go. We didn't have, you know, a, a significant, you know, discussion on this before I brought forward all the information. I, I felt it very important to provide you context and support for the idea of doing this, and that context and support comes from the city's adopted documents. So, that's why you kind of got a long section on that. And that's just so you understand that you have the authority and the ability to do what you're, you're looking to do. Because some people might look at this and go, "What's the planning commission doing? Why are you doing this?" You're doing it because, one, it helps development along the waterfront. It's important, and I, and it's discussed in our land use documents that have been recently adopted. So, I, I think you have that. And then the other was, I don't, I didn't exactly know where you wanted to go, so I provided you kind of menu things with sort of considerations for what you might want to put into policy. You, you could throw all of it out and come up with something entirely different, and it wouldn't offend me one bit. I was just trying to give you something to think about in the context of the conversation we were going to have this evening. Otherwise, I, I thought you might be kind of lost. I do like the idea of the written comment, though, and then I can kind of condense that and bring you back a much more focused, you know, document for you to review, which I think would be helpful. I, I wasn't exactly sure where this was going to go, but I've always thought it was going to take multiple meetings, you know, like the three or four, potentially, is what I was thinking. So, that doesn't scare me at all. I think, you know, very reasonable to get comments back from you and allow me a little bit of time to frame that into another staff report. That would, that would be bringing it back on the 16th of November for your next consideration. And we kind of have a little bit of an issue right now from a staffing standpoint internally, is our admin person who puts together the staff report and stuff is going to be leaving on vacation and would be unavailable next week to put the packet together for us. We're putting the packet together this week. So, we, we have two reasons why it would be very difficult to bring anything back by the second. Anyway.
Great.
Susan, can I just?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and I just want to, just thank you, Scott, for giving me what I was feeling, which is, there's nothing wrong with doing this in three to four meetings, because I'm looking at a downtown water strategic plan, I'm looking at a waterfront master plan, I'm looking at our newly adopted general plan. These are all adopted documents I need to review in full. I'm a fairly new planning commissioner, so I pay, I think it's my responsibility to do do that in order to give you the best feedback I can give you, especially as we're looking at the whole waterfront area. And the fact that Susan brought it up, the fact that Sean said, "Scott, is there an opportunity for us to reach out to other commissions or committees to get their feedback on what we're trying to do to put something forward that has a little bit more support, since we'll be giving this to the council?"
Well, I mean, it doesn't, you don't have to give it to council. This could be, this could be, I was going to bring this back with a resolution and memo. It was going to be a planning commission memo, adopted by resolution by this body for use in how we review projects and how this body reviews projects. We have many of those already, and that's completely within the authority of the planning commission to do. So, I hadn't really planned on, you know, going to city council and asking them to, to bless it unless you want us to. Then we could certainly do that. But, and, and I think the, the city council thinks you're people, folks. They put you in these positions. You're reviewing land use. I think it's probably appropriate for planning commissions to do things like this.
Yeah. For some reason, I had thought I had written, I had read somewhere that we would be proposing something in a memo format that would go to council. So, I don't know. It doesn't have to. I agree with you, but at least we're going to have some guidelines that we can use moving forward. We've already started the ball rolling with a real big project that we were able to work through, but we're going to continue to do that. We're not going to stop doing that. But this effort should, there's nothing wrong with taking three to four meetings to get through this effort. That's all I was trying to say. You said it, too. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Any other comments? Bill?
Just to carry on on what Scott was just saying, and in response to Mike, this idea came out of the Dutchman project. What we were hoping to do is find a way to institutionalize what we learned on that project. And so, the key pieces, we want to get them there. I think it'll help the next applicant who has to deal with this. It becomes a, a way of articulating the documents that are already there. So, I, my hesitation would be, if we make this bigger than it is, it's not going to do what we're trying to do, which is respond quickly, nimbly, to what we're learning as we do these individual projects. So, in other words, I, I don't think we're proposing to redo the general plan and the, and, you know, the, the Harbor Walk guidelines. What we want to do is kind of pull from the stuff that we've learned, highlight it, articulate it in a way that has implementation about it. The key thing a commission can do is implement. And I think this memo will help us do that as we go further down, and it emphasizes the importance we found in that project. So, my encouragement is, I don't think we, if we go too big, too inclusive, then it transforms it into a different kind of document. I'm hoping we can use this as a way that really just helps the next project as it comes along, and we can continue to grow, you know, with the next memo we do.
Yeah. And I agree, Bill, that, and like Scott said, he doesn't think he would be ready by November 2nd, but we would give him feedback as soon as possible. But we will be ready for the next pro, next project. We will be ready. So, there's no doubt about that. But, but, but we have to, you know, he gave us a lot of information for, for a reason. He wants us to consider a lot of things in this process. All right?
So, I, I was going to add quickly, the public lateral access, the PLA. You know, it has kind of a romantic thing to it, you know? We'd have the only PLA.
We could do that, yeah. We could call it. Commissioner Roshan's PLA. Oh, yeah. I, I think, I, I, this is a really comprehensive staff report, and as you say, Scott, there may be other things that come up. But I really think we could take this as, as a jumping off point, you know, highlight the things. I mean, as I went through it, I thought, "Yeah, I like this look. I really don't like that one." You know, I think it's pretty easy for us to, you know, gee, do we want big concrete benches, or do we want those nice airy-looking, comfortable-looking, you can tell which ones I like better, you know, metal seats that are washable? I, I think we could go through and, and have our comments to Scott in a fairly timely fashion, so. Sound good to everybody?
Yes.
Ready to move on from that one?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Good conversation. Thanks for bringing it forward. C3. Planning Commission Requested Discussion Item Regarding Potential Future Removal or Demolition of the Vistra Power Plant Stacks. This is another review and provide input. Will we do any kind of report to start with, Scott?
I do have a, I think I probably have like six, maybe seven slides, just to give you a little bit of background on it. And so, I'm going to, again, share my screen.
Okay.
Let's see here. The other one? Okay. Next slide. Okay. Coming up everything here. All right. So, a little bit of, you know, background on the, on the Vistra power plant stacks. We had a community forum sponsored by the city back on September 8th. And as part of that, the key objective was to provide information and opportunities for the public to gain insights and a point of view about the stacks' future. The planning commission requested that this item be agendized at the last planning commission meeting, so have a short turnaround time, which is why we get a short staff report and short presentation, and have you sort of focus towards the information that was provided in relation to the community forum that was presented on September 8th. And this opportunity here this evening would provide, you know, the ability for the planning commission to have this discussion and to receive input and feedback from the public moving forward. The information session, you know, some of the background material in there is, the city does have a memorandum of understanding with Vistra entered into or agreed upon, 6921, that unless, so Vistra is responsible for demolition, the turbine building and stacks, unless the city requests by December 31st of 2022 that the stacks remain. Otherwise, Vistra is required by that MOU to demo the stacks and power building by December 31st of 2027, and if they don't, they would owe the city $3 million. The presentation included a couple of sections. One of them was related to origin, uses, and current conditions of the stacks. And, and we had presenters speak on, on those from the Air Pollution Control District and the Department of Toxic Substance Control. And then there's a third, a second section was consideration for the future of the stacks, and we had presentations on that from, from Vistra, APCD, ETSC, and Coastal Commission Written Comments included in, in the record for that. And there was a, this, this is a part of, you'll recognize it from the slide deck, it's included in your staff report as one of the exhibits. This is a history slide. It just talks about the stacks and why they're there. They were necessary for venting exhaust from the power plants. The first stack was, was constructed between 1953 and 1955. That stack is different than the other two, as it's formed from concrete with a brick liner. And then the second two stacks were constructed in the early 60s, and slightly different construction, they're concrete, and they have a steel liner, which is the difference. That was sort of the, the upgrade, the technology at the time, was to add the steel liner to them, to strengthen them. The stacks currently don't serve any purpose. They do have, they do support some PG&E communication equipment on Stack 3, and any demolition would, would require that, that communication equipment be relocated. There is lighting on the stacks. That's required by the FAA to avoid aircraft collisions. And, you know, the type and color of those lights and the flashing frequency is all determined by the FAA, our Federal Aviation Administration. You know, based on information from Vistra, the stacks are in good condition, and there is no hazardous materials associated with the stacks that we are aware of. Vistra is required to complete regular inspections of the stacks, specifically Stack 1 and 2 for SLA-APCD as part of a conditional exemption that they have. And those annual reports are available from APCD. If people are interested, they can inquire with APCD to get copies of those reports. Seismic strength of the, of the stacks, it did withstand, it did withstand the 2003 San Seima earthquake, which registered 6.5 and resulted in significant shaking in Moro Bay. We do not know, you know, what the structural integrity as it relates to seismic activity is for those stacks. So, that, that is a question that's out there. Again, the stacks are in good condition, and stacks that are maintained in good condition over time can last in excess of 100 years. And there are many examples of those outs in various other areas in the United States. Slide on stack maintenance. These stacks do undergo regular Class 1 and Class 2 structural inspections on a biannual basis. The cost of those inspections range from, range from $15,000 to $50,000. Over the, the last several years, maintenance has consisted of light replacement on the stacks, bolt replacements for the ladders and platforms, and then other, you know, and various other safety items that have to be fixed. And those costs range anywhere from $5,000 to $30,000 per year, depending on, you know, what has to be replaced and maintained. The next Class 2 inspection, which is the more expensive one, the $50,000 one, and will include inspection of the internal liner, and external inspection of the exterior of the stacks will occur later this year. We don't know what the future maintenance cost of the stacks might be. We just kind of know these generalized costs. They're not insignificant. If the decision were made by the city as it relates to that MOU that I talked about in the beginning of the presentation... um, but it was made by the city to maintain them, we gave word by the end of, um, 2022 that we want to keep the stacks. They probably end up being maintained by us. Um, and the recommendation, if that were the case, would be to cap them. Uh, and capping each one of them, uh, would cost $275,000 approximately per stack. Um, that's, and those numbers come from, from Vistra. They're not numbers that were generated, um, by the city of Morro Bay. Uh, so the conclusion of this is, um, we're getting, we're taking this input, this opportunity to receive input from the public and from the commission this evening. Um, I do not expect any, um, as this was not a, um, an item, you know, directed to the council, directed by the council to the planning commission to review. Do not expect recommendation from the, um, planning commission this evening, but I do, I will record input. And that input will be provided to, uh, the city manager, Scott Collins, um, so that he, as an exhibit for his staff report, that he will be bringing forward to city council on this very subject on, uh, October 26th. Um, so, uh, make sure to be explicit about things you would like me to include in my sort of, um, list of items that I'll be handing over to him. If there are certain things and are very particular points of, points that you want to make, um, please be sure to be explicit, so I don't, uh, you know, miss out on any of those types of things. Um, that being said, that's the end of my presentation. Um, hopefully you all had the opportunity to either, um, review the tapes of that meeting, uh, in September, or, um, and review the power plant presentations also attached from that meeting to the staff report. Like, there's 40-something slides, so it's a pretty big slide deck, um, which is why I didn't want to recreate that here. Just kind of give you a brief overview and then turn it over to the commission for discussion, because that's what you requested.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Um, any questions of staff before we open for public comment? Questions? Uh, Anthony, do we have anybody waiting for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Chair Stewart. I see NelsonWest1@gmail.com. I'm going to go ahead and unmute. Okay. Looks like an email address. There you are. You should be unmuted.
Good, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name's David Nelson. And the first comment that Scott made, uh, we don't know about the hazardous material inside the stack. Well, you know, Duke Energy, in sworn testimony in their, in their, um, environmental impact report when they were going to put a new power plant in there, one of the first things they came up with was that the stacks were contaminated and they are hazardous material, and they need to be taken down and treated as hazardous material. That was 20 years ago. Since that point, they've been, the power plant has been fine for releasing asbestos out of those stacks. Those stacks are one of the most polluted sites in the whole county. This was sworn testimony by Duke that the cement of those stacks could not be recycled because of the pollution. Now, to keep saying that they, we don't know, that's true, we don't know, because when Duke presented this, they said, we're going to take them down, and they're hazardous, and we're going to deal with it as hazardous material. So they didn't go in, you know, cores, not cores, even, just scrapings. I mean, knowing that asbestos went up the top, and they burnt bunker oil, the cheapest bunker oil on earth, 30 years in there. They were declared to be hazardous material. They're telling the people in this town that they're clean. That's not the truth. We got to tell the truth here. Another fact that they used in their presentation was it was going to cost between $3 and $5 million to take down the stacks. Again, now, all this material is in Cal Poly. If you want to go find it, it's there. It's all, all the records of that power plant is there. And again, with, with the concern that's going on and the false stuff that's going on, for our city to take that, Duke 20 years ago testified that it was going to cost between $12 and $12.5 million to take those stacks down. They presented something like $3.5 to $5 million. That's a big discrepancy, and I don't believe that it could be done for $3 to $5 million. But we should just have the power company take it down like they are supposed to. We've been jacked around on the pollution on there by a bogus deed restriction that PG&E put on to dodge their responsibility to clean it up. I live here. I've lived here half my life, and I'm going to live with this pollution on that site because our city is not standing up and saying, no, you can't do this. And they shouldn't be able to. A polluter should not be able to put a deed restriction in that relieves him or them of their duty to clean it up. There are a lot of bad stuff over there, and it should have been cleaned up. But the city stood back and accepted the deed restriction that the polluter wrote themselves. This is ridiculous. I mean, I, I really, and it's really close to our water wells. Nobody's looking at that. I mean, Lionel Kaiser is part of that power plant, and you're going to leave all this toxic waste under the ground because it's industrial? Well, it is industrial, but our wells are on one side. We have MTB spill there that's been maintained. Now, we're going to leave all this stuff in the power plant? This isn't right. Our city's more valuable than this, you know? And the misinformation that's going out on this is just wrong. The people need to know that those stacks in that site is the most polluted area in our county, and we should be getting more for our money. And this is just wrong. We shouldn't even be thinking of taking this. I mean, they, they were talking about millions of dollars. Where are we going to get millions of dollars? And why would you want to take care of three, 450-foot cement stacks? Give me a break. It's polluted, period. It shouldn't go any further than that. You guys, if you don't know what's in there, have them do a study. Have them tell you what's in there. But like I said, Duke has testified under oath that that was, the whole cement project was toxic, and it could not be recovered in the environmental impact report. Go look it up. It's still on the records. I know Cal Poly has it in the library, the Coastal, uh, Coastal, uh...
Coastal Commission?
They took care to put all those records in the library, so they're available. And these, and these studies are available. So, you know, don't keep telling people that it's not polluted. It is polluted in a big way. And to say anything else is just not right. So think about that before you try to keep these stacks. Thanks for listening to me, and there's a lot more you don't know about that power plant site, and it's sick. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your input, Mr. Nelson. Do we have any other public comments?
Yes, I see Nathan with his hand up. Nathan, I am unmuting you. You should be...
Is this Nathan who spoke before on this?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, good. Okay.
Um, I, I fully agree with Nelson. There is no, there is no benefit to not allowing, not requiring the power company to remove these. The burden, the, the cost of maintaining and removing these in the future for, you know, my children or the next generation to have to remove or maintain these is outrageous. The fact that we have the ability to have someone remove them and take care of all the hazardous waste, any other issues that pop up, it's going to be all them, then the taxpayers aren't going to be responsible for taking care of these. The idea that these are, need to remain for, um, you know, the, the aesthetic appeal, or some, I guess, you know, I've heard the other side where people say that it's a historic part of Morro Bay. But these are not unique, and they're not, you know, significant landmarks that are, you know, unrecorded in other areas. And so there's essentially no good reason to have them. And, uh, in, in my opinion, it's not even a decision. It, it should just be their responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else in the queue?
Uh, thank you, Chair Stewart. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue. Jane Roshan just raised her hand as I said that.
Okay.
So, okay. Jane, you should be unmuted.
Oh, great. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, nice to be here. Thank you all for holding this public comment. Um, you know, being in Morro Bay and seeing the stacks has, and hearing the process of what's been discussed at the city level with the stacks has, um, really been making me think about, you know, the future that lies ahead in terms of sustainability and our own environmental responsibility and stewardship of taking care of the planet. And, um, so that's just something that I wanted to bring up in today's discussion. Um, it's something that, uh, my dad is Bill Roshan, the commissioner on the board, and, um, it's something that I brought up to him because this is what I do in my profession. Um, I work for the Department of Energy as a fellow for the state energy program, and we provide resources and technical assistance to local governments and state governments to, um, really, you know, create sustainable climate goals and energy goals, incentivize energy efficiency and renewable energy. Um, so I really just wanted to come today to talk about, um, you know, the issue of embodied carbon when we're looking at demolition or, uh, deconstruction of, um, large structures such as the stacks. Um, you know, something that's happening a lot right now in the environmental space is looking at the usage of, uh, re-adaptation. Um, and there's a very logical and procedural way to do this. Um, it's a great resource that many people are using in the sustainability space now. And it's a, it's called a lifecycle assessment. Um, and you basically, um, take, you know, data on embodied carbon, um, which is, um, carbon that resides from the manufacturing, the construction, anything that has to do, um, with the construction or demolition or operation of those structures. Um, and what happens is a lot of, you know, the carbon sits in those buildings, and when you take down, um, a structure, you, it's important to account for the carbon that would be released, um, with demolition. So these lifecycle assessments are, are really being used widely in local governments, and there's a ton of resources that I use in my job all the time to provide to local governments, and we partner with, you know, the EPA. I work for the Department of Energy, but the EPA is working on this. So is the Department of State, um, really to, um, encourage and empower local governments to create, um, energy planning and climate planning that is environmentally friendly. Um, so basically, you know, what this would do, a lifecycle assessment or really looking at this embodied carbon would help the city identify the elements that are carbon-intensive in this process, um, and look at any alternative options or the, you know, the process itself of demol, of demolition of the stacks, um, to see how much carbon dioxide would be released in addition to how many toxins, asbestos, um, certain, you know, chemicals that have been entrapped in the structure since operation. So, um, it's, you know, and it also can often prove to show cost-effective alternatives or options as well. Um, so not to say, you know, that, um, demolition would be particularly um, a negative thing for the city, but, you know, there's a bunch of resources out there and in the sustainability realm that cities are being empowered to use, um, to really make a thorough, objective decision and know, you know, exactly what your environmental impact is when you go into, um, doing this type of, of large, uh, process and project. Um, and it's just, you know, it's something that I, I just wanted to voice opinion on because there's a lot of research out there showing, um, the impact that embodied carbon does have on, on new buildings. Um, and just, you know, uh, looking at renovation or, uh, adaptive reuse, um, according to the Energy Information Administration often can save between 50% to 75% of the embodied carbon emissions, um, as compared to constructing a new building. So 50% to 75% of those embodied carbon emissions that would be released during the demolition of a structure can often be saved when you look at the alternatives through, um, re-adapt, you know, adaptive reuse or renovation or other alternatives. And, um, you know, I'm happy to talk about this further with anyone. Um, it's something that I'm very passionate about, and I do in my job every single day. Um, we see local governments all around the country really taking this on to realize their climate goals. Um, and, you know, it's something that, uh, many, many people are talking about, and, um, I'd be happy to discuss more if the commission is interested.
Terrific. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Roshan. Any other comments? Uh, public comment, Anthony?
Oh, thank you, Chair Stewart. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
All right, so back to the commission. Um, one thing I would like to say right off the top from having, uh, participated in the community forum, if and when demolition is, uh, scheduled to be done, the Air Pollution Control District, uh, at that point would, would kick in and would review all of the potential pollution issues and ways to mitigate, um, any problems. That was my understanding. So there would, um, be abatement, certainly of asbestos, but I think also, um, I would imagine they would be looking at this issue of, of embodied carbon. Um, I think also, you know, often there's an assumption that we tear down one building and put up another, and I think that's something down the road that the city will be looking at. What is the highest and best use of this property? It may not be buildings. It may be open space. It may be forest. It may be, um, you know, a park-like area. Maybe something that actually contributes back to cleaner air and a better environment all around. Um, so with that, any other responses? Mike, your hand is up.
My cue, Susan, I just wanted to say that I did participate in the community forum, so I listened to the whole presentation, so I just wanted to say that. And I thought Scott did a good job of just giving us a summary of that, so I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you.
Great. All right, thank you. Uh, Bill?
Chair Stewart, I'd like to list what I think are four considerations. And right now, I don't have a horse in the race, whether you keep the stacks or take them down. What I'm concerned about is that we don't want to rush into a decision until I think we've looked at this very thoughtfully, carefully, and we can respond to issues down the road. For example, um, the embodied carbon is probably not something that the pollution folks will look at, um, because it's, it's a bit, it's a different way to conceive of what's going on here. The reason I thought that was like a helpful comment, and she's a wonderful young lady, by the way.
Yes.
The reason I thought that was a helpful comment is that, um, Morro Bay is about to create a new brand for itself based as a sustainable city and one of the most beautiful natural environments on the coast. With the wind farm offshore, with the battery storage thing about to happen, we need to know that if we take the stacks down, is that really the most energy-effective? Now, that's only one of, you know, dozens of considerations, but I think we need to know what that is. In other words, what is the most sustainable way to deal with this, these stacks? And if we take them down, we look at what the real toxins are. Is there a way to maybe recycle them on-site? I have no suggestions here at all, except for taking the time to look at it. The other point I'd like to make is that, um, looking at, it's, it's fun to think that we were looking at the Harbor Walk today at the same time we're talking about the stacks, because the point that Public Spaces made in their report is that the Harbor Walks become branded based on the harbor, of course, but on, on the events that you have and the history of the harbor. The history here, um, there's a lot of examples how these artifacts are saved. And I know you all know them. I distributed some of them. I don't know if that's right for Morro Bay, and all the decisions have to be weighed. But we should look at the master plan and consider these things before we go ahead and take the stacks down. Once the stacks are down, they're... Once the stacks are down, they're down, there would be no way to kind of turn around and go back. When you look at these extraordinary waterfront walks around the world, what you see is a way to make a tourist destination. So a quick example is the Tate Modern in London. Right next to it is the world's largest Ferris wheel, which costs a lot of money, and it's a giant tourist attraction, just suggesting, in a way, and I know this has been talked about before, but the stacks could easily be a tourist attraction. And I'll just give one example, and I'm going to credit Joe for this. If it becomes an observation deck at 450 feet, and again, this is happening all over, you go up there and you know what you might be able to see, as Joe suggested, from the top of the stacks, I think you might be able to see the wind farm.
Probably.
I don't think you're going to see the wind farm from the ground, that's what we've been told, because of the curvature of the earth. So you would come in here, and the ability to go up there and experience the coast from this kind of event would be a dynamic tourist draw. That being said, I'm not saying that's what we should do, we have to weigh everything, but I'm suggesting that with the master plan, we could do a conceptual master plan that'll give us the chance to at least consider this and have it in front of us. My third thing, so it is the image of sustainability, which is so important, it is the tourist thing, you know, up there at the top of the stacks, standing in the past energy look, you know, past energy uses, looking at the future energy uses, it's pretty exciting. The third thing is costs. These costs so far that we've been given have been given by Vistra experts. I think we owe it to ourselves to look a little harder, to make sure that all these things really are as accurate as they can be, and are balanced against the advantage that we, advantages we might have by recycling them or repurposing them. Those are my three big points, and I'm excited that Scott will be able to offer that to council. My main message is, don't rush to take them down until we have a chance to give ourselves the confidence in sustainability, costs, and tourism with history that really makes sense. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Bill. You know, one response I would, couple responses I would have to that in terms of the rush, I think we do have a timeframe. I do think we need, and it will be up to council to decide this, but we have a calendar year ahead of us for them to make these decisions. And I think, my feeling, listening to the Vistra determination of expenses or predictions of expenses, is they were probably underestimated. I think the costs of any and all of these things will only go up, the liability insurance to have people going up on those stacks, the maintenance, all of those kinds of costs will increase.
I wouldn't disagree.
Yeah, so I think it's, and I think, you know, in my mind, weighing out whether, you know, would this really become a tourist draw, I don't know. But I think that kind of money could be well-used to pave streets, fix sidewalks, do the kinds of things for our community, the people that live here, that they would appreciate having done. I will also say, just from my own background and experience, you know, yes, historically, for the last 50, 60 years, it's been a power plant, it was built on a cemetery of Native American people who were here for the last, you know, 2,000 to 5,000 years. So, you know, as with anything, I mean, I traveled in Germany and visited Dachau, you know, but do, you know, what do we value and what do we consider a tourist attraction? And what is the cost to the community? So, you know, you probably, I appreciate the history of this plant, and I will say, as a member of the Historical Society and having seen a great presentation on the building of the plant, on the design of the plant that was meant to look like the Temple Luxor of Egypt, you know, I think we've talked about that before. It's fascinating, the whole history of technology in America, and these temples to that kind of power generation. But I, boy, I would hate to let pass the opportunity to have somebody else do the cleanup, you know, because it is a mess. Is it the best use of the land on the waterfront to have this massive building?
Point, counterpoint, which I guess is the point of this discussion. One, you made the point of time, I think the time constraints we're working under is a doable timeframe. The year and several months is enough for us to get answers around the history, the tourism, and around the embodied carbon.
Absolutely.
I think the actual costs, it's not just what you think, we have to know. You can't assume what the costs are. I think we need more than Vistra's word to kind of have a sense of what the real costs to the city might be. Finally, the history is not about an isolated thing, it's about Morro Bay, it's, the history is the identity of what the Harbor Walk might be. We need to think of it in that light. Now, again, I'm not saying for sure that has to happen, but there are many developers who would come here because of the stacks and the power plant, because it could generate that kind of tourism, that kind of opportunity. We won't know that until we do a master plan and offer an RFP to developers, even conceptually to talk about this. If we take the stacks down before we have the chance to do that, that opportunity will be off the table. I'm not trying to solve the debate tonight as much as create a process that we can be proud of and support. It's not the yes or no, right now it's the process that gives us real and fair answers.
Okay, I understand that, I mean, I do feel that these cost estimates, they know what it costs to do the inspections, you know, the major and minor ones, they know what the maintenance costs are now, I think we could get all those figures. In all the years of all the great master plans we've had for different projects in Morro Bay, we are, we have had huge challenges getting any developers to come in and actually do them. So, I mean, I have my own frustrations watching us create these plans that maybe just don't fit our community, and then we don't find developers who want to do them, so.
Do remember, Susan, you and I are on the master plan subcommittee.
Yes.
So we're willing to take that responsibility and try hard. I do think that we're at an interesting time where I think you could say nay or you could say yay. I can show you so many examples where it has succeeded, the only way we're going to know is if we take the next several months and do it. If we do, then we'll know. If we don't, it'll forever be a question. That's process, it's fair process, I think it's what a responsible city absolutely has to do. It's not what you think, it's not what I think, it's what the process describes and offers.
Right. Mike, you got your hand up, and then Joe, you probably need to say some things too.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanted to chime in, just on possibly the historical part of it. I'm actually looking at the stacks right now, it's over 60 years in the community, and it's probably one of the oldest things here. I know the Planning Commission prioritized history as one of the big things we wanted to see preserved in our city. And they say, the longer you wait to save your history, the less of it you have to save. That's just a saying that goes, the longer you have to save your history, the less of it you have to save. So in other words, the longer you take to start saving your history, the less you're going to have to save of it. So, you know, this is obviously one of the most historical things we have in the city, and that's all I'm going to say about it. Like Bill just said, everything's going to work itself out, not on this side or that side, but it is a historical part of our city, period. So let's talk about it and deal with it, and that's it.
Great.
That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Joe?
No problem. This is fascinating, this is one of the best discussions that I've witnessed and participated in my time around the Planning Commission. I've actually, both of the beings, I've actually written some notes down, so I'm going to refer to it periodically. You know, I have long been an advocate of repurposing the generating plant, but with respect to the stacks, you know, my first thoughts about it were essentially a no-brainer, that it, the stacks were inappropriate to the coast, and that it had no utility any longer, and it would be an onerous burden to the city if they ever undertake the demolition of those stacks. However, you know, it's not so simple. Wisdom and rationality really requires that such an enormous decision not be made prematurely. And I'm enough of a cynic to absolutely demand that when these questions need to be answered, they should be answered by third-party consultants and not interested parties. So what do I mean? I mean, is there serious pollutants inside the stack? Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. What would it realistically cost to bring it down? Something more than a vague notion that the stacks are going to stand up for 100 years unless they don't. I mean, I think we could come up with a better answer than that. I'd also like to people to consider the hazards associated with demolition, and, and I hate to mention this, but, you know, risk associated with how thorough the work is done by our corporate partners, and the risk associated to the entire community. And then there is, if we take the stacks down and are lucky enough to preserve the generating plant, that in very serious way, that sort of diminishes the authenticity of our preservation effort. And I was, and it may even, it may even be possible, I don't know if the stacks really lend themselves to some sort of a viewing framework. I was interested, I was talking to a very prominent architect over the weekend, and she was wildly enthusiastic about connecting each of the stacks and doing a fairly transparent elevator and doing some marvelous things. I have no idea if that's possible or what we want to do it, but we had to investigate that, I think. And also, my cynicism also takes me to think, I'm sure Vistra is, would very much like to have a decision made sooner than later, and I also think that to the extent that we scrape all remnants of the PGE plant off the ground, we in some sense lose some influence or power over how the ultimate development is shaped, because, you know, an empty canvas by the person who owns the canvas is a lot easier to design than something that's there and must be worked through when around and about. So I would vote for a lot more information and a considerable more detail of thought about this.
Great, thanks, Joe. One thing that you may be sad to hear, and we'll probably hear a little more when we do our tours of the plant, unfortunately, my understanding is the condition of the power plant itself, just the structure, is a whole lot worse than the stacks. So they may have another 40 years left, given that they've already lived 60 years, but the plant apparently, the siding of it, they described as being like aluminum foil, it's pretty fried. But we'll see, and it'll be really interesting to do the tour. I mean, I know, I always had big visions of, you know, repurposing it as a graduate program for alternative energy studies. But, you know, I heard from people who have actually been a part of that plant, that it's not, it would be a tremendous amount of money to do something like that, but certainly the UC system is not really interested in, so.
You know, I can only remember the words of the architect that I worked with frequently in my career, and he would always tell me, speak out of the difficulties, they speak for themselves, so.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
And I would, I would offer, Susan, historic repurposing and restoration is a major industry around the world. And what happens is there are ways to, it's, the condition can be taken and then enhanced from where it is. So it's, again, it's, we can't speculate, it has to really be authentic and well-looked at. I am a preservation architect, I know how careful you have to be before you make these pronouncements.
Yeah, and I think we also have to keep in mind our community, how big it is, how small it is, the kinds of folks who live here, the kinds of folks who visit here, how many more visitors can we really accommodate? My kids went to school in Clermont, so you know Clermont, and it's a sweet little town, but it's probably three times the size of Morro Bay. They have, they had, they had packing houses, so it used to be orange groves, and there were the packing houses for the orange groves. So they took one of those buildings and repurposed it, filled it with restaurants and shops, and they have a library for the prison system there. It's really interesting, just because it's like used books, but it's for the prisons, and, so it's an interesting place, I would say, in all the years that I went back and forth there at any given time, it was at least a third empty. And that was a community that had three times the population, five colleges, a graduate seminary, they had a lot, but not a tourist destination. So, you know, you just, I think we have to balance a lot of things, and I'm sort of glad it's not our decision, it's city council's decision, but I think it's important that we all have input, and make sure that whatever we come up with fits our town.
You know, Susan, these are good points, but we got to go beyond the anecdotal. One of the things, it's not our decision, and I'm not saying keep them or take them down. Again, I'm arguing for a responsible process. If we do these things before we have the master plan, before we have real costs, before we know the actual conditions of the buildings, we limit what kind of tourist attraction it can be. If this is not the kind of tourist attraction we want, I understand that, and then we don't do it. But if this is the kind of thing that could draw development and tax dollar here, you have to consider it. And, you know, the architect that Joe talked to who got excited, people see the potential in what we have here. It's the most unique site on the coast, to not consider it and give the council the information to make the right decision would be a mistake, it would be a tragedy. And that's what I think the Planning Commission needs to stand up for, is process.
And Mike?
Yeah, and I agree with Bill, I was going to kind of say that, that regardless of what we do with the stacks, again, I haven't decided, I'm not really the decision-maker, we will help the council in setting up, by doing the work we do, it'll actually put them in a better position to do whatever they decide to do, stacks or not.
Right.
We're actually going to facilitate the process of moving on with that whole site if we do our work well.
Right.
We'll actually help the council do their work. So that's what it's all about, is if we do our work well, the council will be, have options, have, you know, the best option, have B, C, and D possibly, so that's what it's about. So in other words, we're not doing this just to do it, we're doing this actually to reach the ultimate decision, which will be the council's ultimately, okay?
Joe?
Good, good. Just to add, in these additional studies, consultations, additional information gathered, those costs should be borne by the corporation and property. I'm not suggesting that the city has to embrace those costs, that should be part of the negotiating decisions, what's done with them.
That's a good point, let's hope.
Well, I mean, you know, that's the way the master plan is, the Vistra's going to pay for it. So a lot of these studies can be done through the master plan, and can be done effectively and fast, and there's already money there to do them.
Great, okay. Okay. Any other comments? And we can go back to Scott, see if he's got enough, or if he's fallen asleep, maybe?
No, he didn't fall asleep.
No, there he is. He's writing things.
I got, I have lots and lots of notes. I'll have to condense them down tomorrow after our site visits. But, yeah. I'm all good. I think I have what I need. If you, unless you have more comments, I'll take them.
Oh, we could comment all night long. It's an interesting challenge, because, you know, it does have a lot of emotions on both sides. You hear a lot of local people who grew up with those stacks and can't imagine life without them, and then people who think they're an eyesore, so...
And Susan, that's why I'm, I'm happy, Susan, that six people applied for the Planning Commission, because you know what? That's our job.
Yeah.
Okay, that's our job.
Yeah.
So, to help the council make their decisions. So, the Planning Commission's works at, if you want to help Morro Bay become a better place.
There you go.
Okay.
Serve your community. So, Scott, tomorrow, I know Mike asked earlier, we just meet at the entrance to the power plant for those tours?
Yeah, they asked to become, whatever time you're going, yeah, like somewhere in front of me. They wanted us there 10, 15 minutes ahead of time.
Okay.
You know, there's like a safety briefing and a handing out of helmets and vests and things, so...
Is parking and all that stuff explained, Scott?
Yeah, you, you, the main entrance, you go in there, and they'll, the ob directions when you get there, where to park, be inside the main entrance, though.
Yeah, I think we get to park inside, not out on the street, because we're official Planning Commissioner comments and future agenda items is up next.
Can I just ask a question, Susan? Sorry, I didn't put my hand up, but I, I had asked Scott about this, only because I think we're at that point now, because some of us have talked about this, about becoming part of the APA, the American Planning Association, who's going to look into that, because, you know, I hate to have to reinvent the wheel. I know others have done this before. You know, even what we've talked about here, there's many studies, Bill found some in other countries. So, what I'm saying, there's other examples of what we're trying to do. And what I liked about the APA, they always kept you informed about what cities were doing, like ours, not like ours, small, big, any size, with parking, with, with, with harbors, with, with everything. So, APA has always been something I've enjoyed as long as I was a planning commissioner for eight years in my other job. So, I had loved to be part of APA again, and I, I just thought I'd ask them, if, if we can't join from the city side, can I join myself? Now that I'm a planning commissioner again, Scott, could I apply for the APA again and just become a, you know, get their materials, because that's what I want. I want their resources.
Yeah. Commissioner Rodriguez, I, I did look into that when you made the request. I mean, I need to go back. I had, I actually, Cindy, go, go look up, and I, and I don't remember what the, what the cost on it was. So, I need to go back and look that. I apologize for not following back up, but if you...
Oh, it's okay.
I, I, I just lost track of it, but I will, I'll get that information for you, out to you this week. Yeah, I apologize for not sending that to you.
Oh, it's okay. And Scott, can you check to see if we can actually become members on our own? I think all it requires is that you're a planning staffer or a planning commissioner, somebody on, on that side, right? They don't just take anybody. You have to be an official planner or planning, I think.
I, I don't know, I don't know about that. I, I just, I just asked her to look at what the, what the cost was for planning commissioners, so I could find out what the, you know, what it would be. And she looked it up and told me what it was, and I just don't remember off the top of my head now.
Great. I just like their material, because they keep you informed as to what, what's happening, you know, how cities are redeveloping, developing, redoing themselves.
Seems like it'd be really valuable.
Oh, it is, it is.
Sure.
Yeah. All right, thank you. That's the only thing I had, Susan.
Okay. Bill, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just a quick one, and I, I love that this is the follow-through from everything tonight. I want to propose that we get the, the Master Planning Subcommittee going as soon as we can. Have a meeting, and as soon as Scott's available and Susan, you're ready, and start to at least lay out, map out what the schedule might be, you know, look at the kinds of consultants we might involve. Does that sound, make sense, Scott?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. I'll, I'll reach out to both of you, get some times for that. That's, you know, works for me.
Is there a great point in having Mr. Heller involved with that? Do we want to pull in a council member? Just a question. I mean, I, you know...
So, I, I mean, it creates interesting issues. We have a council subcommittee on Vistra.
Okay, so they already...
Yeah, and it, that involves Councilmember Addis and Mayor Heding.
Right.
So, Jeff is not on that subcommittee, so a little...
Well, could we...
Sure, I mean, we could, you certainly could certainly...
Should we pull in one of them, then? I mean, if they're, if that's, they're already sort of doing the deep dive.
We could, I have a, just give me one second, let my calendar... I think we have one coming up, it's tomorrow at the end of the day.
Okay.
I can ask them.
Okay.
I'll, I'll let them know, I mean, I'll let them know what would be transpired this evening, and then see if there's interest from one of them to, to join us. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Seems like we might get where we're going faster if we loop them in early. But, Joe?
Yeah, I, I just had another thought with respect to these stacks. You know, it, it seems to me that Vistra should at least theoretically be neutral after the prospects of even paying to have the smokestacks demolished or set aside the appropriate amount of money in an escrow for it to be done sometime in the future. And, you know, it, it, it wouldn't take that much of, that much imaginative investing to get a return that, you know, outdoes inflation. And, you know, that money could be sitting in an account for decades, literally, to ultimately take the stacks down sometime in the undetermined future. So, the notion of, you know, we've got to do it now so that it doesn't place an unreasonable burden on the city, and, you know, I, I, I think that can be eliminated, a little creative planning.
Yeah, I don't know enough about cities and investing money like that to know how that all works out, but...
Well, I mean, I think that the thought process there is, and that's based on the MOU and conversations that we've had relation, in relation to the MOU, is that if the city gave the, the word that we wanted to preserve them, maintain them, then they become ours. This turn just goes here, and that becomes the city's issue, you know, with what happens to it. How we maintain it, the cost would be ours. If eventually, you know, that needed to be taken down for structural issues, then we would be on the hook for those. We would have to set up those types of accounts, literally, I mean, to do it responsibly. Not that it couldn't be done, but we would need to do something along those lines, you know, based on, you know, whatever structural evaluation that we do before making the decision or what have you, so...
But, but, but my point is, how, how does Vistra explain that? If, say for the, say for the sake of argument, it's going to cost them $4.5 million to take down those three stacks today. They give the city the $4.5 million and say, we're done, you invested...
The MOU has offered $3 million.
Yes, I know, I know. And I'm suggesting that all sorts of things could happen, including renegotiations. That's it.
One, and I, I don't want to burden you with more stuff, and I have started looking at SB 9, but I wondered if in the next couple of months, maybe we could just get a, a staff rundown, bullet points, the important things we'd be looking at with some of these new legislations that pop up every week, it sounds like, in terms of, you know, housing and development, what we're looking for.
Yeah, SB 9's a big one. I, was it, the Planning Commission, I talked to you guys about this last time, that we had, I, I, I was at a presentation for that Zoom meeting, and the slide deck was 40-something slides.
Yeah.
I didn't mention other... That's not to mean that we can't do it, I'm just saying that...
We could do 20 slides.
That's how, I would just, that's how complicated it was.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it didn't, I, I would agree, it didn't need all of those slides, it was a little overkill perhaps, but that was attorneys giving the presentation, so they tend to maybe go a little overboard, so...
To support Susan, could you do a, like a 20-minute kind of overview? Because this is being talked about in every city, every, you know, up and down the state, right? Is, is there a way to get some summation? This is the biggest thing that's happened again in my career, that's SB 9, yeah.
No, no, absolutely. I think it's a good future agenda, and I'm happy to, you know, to, to, to provide a presentation to the Planning Commission on it. I'm reasonably comfortable with what's required of it, so, yeah, happy to do it.
Just because it seems so like, you know, I, I want to hear more, and if, if there's a way to find out the most articulate kind of considerations right now, maybe that could just be kind of, you know, harvested from other cities. I don't think we need a lot of original work, right?
No, that's what I was saying, I wasn't planning on, you know, making it, making it up from scratch. I, I, I'm a big advocate of borrowing liberally, you know, from others that have, you know, gone down the road ahead of me. So, so, yeah, I, I definitely, that's why I don't really have, I'm not happy to provide a presentation to you. Maybe we do that, that second meeting in November, something like that, or, or the first one in December. I could, I could set it up for you to one of those, depending on how many items we have on those agendas.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy, happy to do it.
Great. All right. Any other Commissioner comments? All right, Scott, Community Development Director comments.
Yeah, Bill, the comment I was going to make, and we already talked about it, was just that make sure you show up a little bit early, you know, prior to the, your, your showing time at the main entrance to the power plants. And I think I gave, I think the email that I gave you before had the clothes requirements, clothes, shoes, you know, pants, that type of thing. They'll provide the other safety equipment. If you already wear glasses, you don't need safety glasses, which will be given, hard hats and that type of thing. And I think they'll, they'll be handing out those for if you don't wear glasses, then safety glasses, then, and 95 masks will be handing us, so...
Great.
And they'll give you, it's a safety orientation, then you have to sign a waiver thing, so...
Sounds like fun.
Could be interesting.
All right, then I think we are adjourned. Our next meeting is November 2nd, 6 o'clock, same time, same place, via Zoom. Wear your masks, get your shots, stay healthy, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. And we'll get together and see you sooner.
We'll see you tomorrow, but just...
And tomorrow for some of us, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Susan. This was very great.
Great. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Take care.